Sorry for the delay.
No worries, no worries. Sorry about that, everyone. We had a little bit of a technical issue. Uh, my name is Chris Mockford. I'm the vice chair of the planning board for the town of Norfolk. Unfortunately, our chair Chad Peck is under the weather and will not be able to join us. Permit me to just do a quick roll call vote of the planning board. And we will move forward from there. Uh, Eric Diamond, clerk. Of course, I did it when he's. All right, thank you. Uh, Gary Sullivan.
Here.
John Whittleton. I think we have John, right?
Let's see, John.
Okay, do we have Melissa Mayo or associate clerk?
I am here.
Thank you. And we have Richard McCarthy, our town planner.
Here.
And Betsy Puzo, our administrative assistant.
I am here.
Good evening, everyone. This is the open meeting of the planning board of the town of Norfolk. It's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty. Due to the current state of emergency and the Commonwealth through the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate for the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law. If you have meetings publicly accessible in a physical location, further, all members of public bodies are allowed to and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely. So long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Um, for this meeting, the uh, planning board is convening by Zoom. As posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Uh, under the agenda section, uh, for Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that you can take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. With that, we have an appointment seven P M, which we are a few minutes behind. For our master plan steering committee meeting. With that, I will pass it along to Mr. Fiala.
Thank you very much, planning board, and welcome, master plan steering committee for our first meeting. Uh, Betsy or Rich, if you wouldn't mind, could you allow me to share my screen?
Sure.
We're very happy to be with you this evening, and thank you for making the accommodations so we didn't have to travel to be with you in this weather. That was nice of you all.
Thank you. Uh, Rich, can you make um Josh a co-host, please?
Sure.
While you're doing that, I'd like to also call out Mr. Justin Casanova Davis, our town administrator, who started us as well.
Good evening, everyone.
Justin.
Excellent. So here we are. Welcome to everyone, uh, both a part of the committee and uh general public of the town of Norfolk. We're very excited to be at the front end of the town's townwide master plan process. Um, and to give you a little bit of that context this evening and to really uh, this evening, give the committee, which is their first meeting together, a chance to meet each other more formally and to start a rapport and dialogue with each other, which will be important for this process. Um, so we'll, we'll be framing out the process for you, but we have left uh, a lot of time in this agenda to have to hear from you all and to get some discussion going uh, and to build that community amongst the committee. So our agenda for this evening, uh, we'll go through some introductions, both on the committee's side and on our side. Uh, so I'll start with myself since I neglected to do so at the beginning, but Josh Fiala, a principal planner at M A P C. Um, and I'm a, a sort of co-lead of this process with my colleague Andrea, and I'll let Andrea and Gloria introduce themselves in a moment. Um, but let me just finish out the agenda first. Uh, so beyond the introductions, we'll give a brief overview of what this is all about, what you can expect over the course of this process, what we're trying to achieve. Uh, and then we'll also have a, a brief conversation with you all uh, about some of the data that we're starting to gather and some of the results from initial interviews and such. And have a conversation about Norfolk today and, and what you see in your community, in your daily life and experience here. Uh, and then also Gloria will share with us the plan for engaging the community as best we can through this process. This is a community-based master plan. We want to uh, reach far and wide across the community and get as many residents involved as we can. Uh, and that will be uh, both a deliberate and sort of uh phased approach, which Gloria has outlined for us. Uh, and we did pass along to the committee a document in that regard, which we'll, we'll talk about as well. And then we'll just close with some next steps and what you can expect over the next month or so, uh, as we continue in this process. So with that, let me um, pass it uh, across to Andrea Harris Long, my colleague and co-lead for this process, and she'll uh, roll us through some intros.
Thanks, Josh. Hi, everyone. I'm Andrea, a senior land use planner at M A P C. And as Josh mentioned, we're co-leading this process, working closely with Gloria on the engagement front. And we're really happy to be here at our first meeting with you all tonight, and so we thought it would be nice to kick off some introductions. First, we'll have the steering committee introduce yourselves. Maybe we could do a, a little icebreaker. You can tell us what you're looking forward to for spring, since we're snowing right now and we're hoping for spring around the corner. Uh, what's your favorite spring activity in Norfolk? And I think because we're on Zoom, maybe we can just kind of go down the list of steering committee members that are shown here on the slide and kind of popcorn around the Zoom's call, and then we'll do some M A P C introductions. So Joe, do you want to kick us off?
Oh, sure. Can I be heard?
Yep, thank you.
Yes.
My name is Joe Burke. I'm a resident from nineteen eighty seven on Lantern Lane in the Lafayette State section of the town. Uh, I'm retired, seventy-one years old, uh, former executive in Massachusetts high-tech firms. Um, and I'm the uh, proud parent of two adults and one grandson. And wraps it up.
Great, thank you so much. It's nice to have you. Uh, Mr. Diamond?
I'm a uh, planning board member, um, with uh, three forty Main Street. And uh, just hope, hoping to help get the uh, master plan uh, through. Thank you. Had a question about uh, upcoming for the spring, but uh, I enjoyed the uh, later uh, daily this afternoon and hoping for it in the, in the morning as well.
Great, thanks. Uh, Dan?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. So my name's Dan Fioc. I've been a resident since November of twenty nineteen. Um, uh, live in Old Card Path off Stop River Road uh, with my wife, and we have two boys, um, uh, two-year-old and a five-week-old. Um, and I'm in commercial real estate professionally, so um, you know, it's interesting to sort of help out in this process as we plan on being in Norfolk for quite some time. Um, and so what I'm looking forward to spring is probably just being able to get outside instead of sitting inside every day.
I'm with you on that. Great, thank you. Uh, Melissa?
Hi, everyone. I'm Melissa Mayo. I'm the associate member on the planning board. Um, I have lived in Norfolk for five and a half years now, um, with my husband and our daughter who's in third grade. Um, and all of our animals who are surrounding me right now, but you can't see them yet. Um, and what I am looking forward to for spring, I actually really like, so in the spring and the summer, we have um, the food trucks and beer trucks and the little get-togethers on the Norfolk Town Hill. Um, so I'm looking forward to getting outside for that.
Great, thank you. That does sound fun. Uh, Chris?
I'm Smart Ford Vice Chair of the Planning Board, uh, Ferguson Road Residence. Been here for about ten years, father of four. Um, really looking forward to similarly, uh, all the town events that uh, start to kick off. Uh, soccer in particular, um, as well as Community Day. Um, and all the other fun things that the Lions do. Um, check us out. We're gonna be doing the polar plunge over at Lake Pearlson.
Nice, thanks. Uh, is Jen on the call? I know we have a phone number. I'm not sure.
Not.
Okay, no problem. Uh, Gary?
Uh, do we skip Jen?
I don't think she's on the call.
Okay, cool. Yep. Uh, yep, so Gary Sullivan, um, I'm on the planning board. I, you know, uh, have this interest in the confluence between our farm-first mentality and economic development, so I started B one zoning committee, got my way on the planning board. Um, that's really where my core interest in the master plan work lives as well. Uh, is, is kind of learning to get those two streams working well together and as the town moves forward. Um, I've been here for about seven years, eight years. Uh, and uh, I live over off of Park Street on the Rentham Town Line with my two kids and my dog and my wife. Um. What am I looking forward to in spring? Well, usually it's like things warm up, the skate park opens, I like to get some skateboarded in, but that's not gonna happen, so if I can just shoot some hoops and walk around, I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, maybe just go home, Gary?
Yeah, yeah, go, go home first, and then, yeah. I had a ski accident, so I'm in rehab right now.
Oh, no, well, hopefully, quick recovery so you can enjoy the spring and get active again.
Thanks.
Uh, and I think John is also not here tonight, correct?
Yes.
All right, um, so thank you all for introducing yourselves. This is the full steering committee. We are hoping to add two new members. The Select Board and Conservation Commission are still doing their um appointments, as I understand it, and then we do have some master plan ambassadors, folks who want to volunteer but couldn't commit maybe to the full monthly meeting and timeline, but they will certainly be a part of the process and can help us get the word out about the project and work with you all. Um, Rich, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, uh, Richard McCarthy, Norfolk Town Planner. Um, so Pat Day is on. I do see him on. He is one of the, the folks that did step forward to be an ambassador. Um, so I don't know if he wants to speak before myself, but.
Sure, sure. Thanks for the introduction, Rich. So, uh, Pat Day, uh, Ten Castle Road. Uh, I have two little kids. I have a two-year-old and a three-year-old, and we actually have one on the way. Um, we've been in town for about two and a half years. Uh, my wife is actually born and raised in Norfolk, so she has a little bit of history. Uh, as far as the spring, looking forward to get outside and get the kids out of the house, so.
Awesome.
But thank, thanks for the introduction, Rich. Look forward to working with you all.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, is there anyone that I missed before we head over to the M A P C introductions?
Uh, no, I think we're, we're good.
Awesome. Uh, so as Josh mentioned, you have Josh, Gloria, and I on tonight's call. But there is actually a quite a large M A P C team that's helping with this project. Uh, and so this is the project team. We have a lot of different um, folks. We have planners who have subject matter expertise who'll be working on the project and the specific topic areas. We have community engagement specialists like Gloria, and some of her team may help on the road as we're doing more engagement. And then, um, we also have folks who are helping with data services and communications. And so you'll probably see Josh, Gloria, and I the most because we're the ones coordinating both the whole project and engagement. But as we move through the process, you'll get to meet all of the different team members at different points in the process, and everyone's looking forward to working on the project, and we've, we've already started meeting internally and actually have a work session next week with the team to share what we hear tonight, so it's going to be a good process and lots of folks working on this on the M A P C side. So on the next slide, we wanted to briefly touch on the process and the roles of um, tonight in the process overall. So what's your role as a steering committee member? The planning board obviously knows what your role is in this, but because you chose them to do the steering committee, we wanted to make sure that folks who are not as familiar with the master planning process might know what you're signing up for. Uh, so the steering committee is going to be really guiding the planning process. We hope to have a monthly meetings where you'll work with us closely, and we're hoping to, I think, stick to the second Tuesday of every month's schedule. And um, whenever we meet, we hope that you'll come ready to share a lot of feedback on the different plan elements. We'll be working closely with you to make sure that we're planning the right types of engagement events, and then we'll look to you to help us promote those events and hopefully attend and participate. And then we want to make sure that we're working with the plan ambassadors. I love that Pat, you're here tonight. I hope that the ambassadors can continue to participate in these meetings, but we want to make sure that we can engage them outside of these meetings too, so we'll work with you all and internally with our team to keep the ambassadors informed of the process for those nights whenever they can attend. On the M A P C side, our role is really to provide you with that technical planning expertise that you hired us for. We um, have experience facilitating these processes and helping towns develop policies and strategies for future municipal action, and we know that that's something that you really want to get out of this. You want this to result in something that can guide your work over the next ten years. We'll be sure to organize and facilitate useful conversations at these monthly steering committee meetings to make the best use of our time together. And then we'll make sure whenever it's relevant, we'll send materials ahead of the meeting so that you can review and come prepared to share that important feedback. And lastly, we'll be organizing and carrying out those outreach events to ensure that there's an inclusive process, making sure that we're checking in with you all. And we want that to be guided by um, your suggestions and your feedback. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Josh to talk a little bit more about the process.
Great, thank you, Andrea. So we did want to give a, a baseline overview of the master plan process, kind of a, a foundation for us all. The, the planning board, I think, has heard some of this previously because of the, the interview process that took place to select the master plan consultant. But I think it's good for us as a full committee to uh, get on the same page. So in terms of the master plan content, really, it's, it's relatively hierarchical, and at the top of that hierarchy is a vision statement, which will be a broad defining statement, which we'll craft with you all and the community based upon feedback we receive at the first community forum and through a community-wide survey. Uh, and then from that vision statement, it will effectively uh, structure reinforcing goals within a series of topic areas that will help to uh, detail and make actionable that vision statement. So you can see the plant, master plan topics across uh, the slide. There's about nine of them. There's a lot of overlap uh, and synergies uh, between these topic areas, and that will be something that we hope to sort of uncover in these conversations across the, the, the process. Uh, each topic will have a set of goals and strategies, and then those will feed into a set of actions which fill out a implementation plan, which will be the most detailed aspect of this master plan content. So it really goes from a high-level vision statement that uh, the town can refer back to. If, if, for example, an issue is not contemplated by this process in the future, the town still has something that you can refer back to as a, a guidepost uh, to make just, uh, decisions or determinations. Uh, and then uh, gives more detail beyond that vision statement to really help guide and direct the town in, in uh, a very comprehensive manner across uh, all the imaginable topics that you would, you might find relating to uh, the town's growth and development patterns, transportation and circulation, uh, services that are provided and, and how that is all achieved over time. The way that we're going to get there from here, uh, kind of starting with a relatively uh, blank piece of paper. Of course, the town has a previous master plan, but that master plan is, is quite dated now, so uh, we're really starting a, a relatively open conversation. Initially, that conversation will be focused on highlighting issues with the town. We've already begun that process through a series of interviews with town staff and leadership uh, of boards, committees, volunteers, and employees alike. Uh, and then we are from that highlighting of issues, and this will be very deliberate, but these are the issues that we're identifying through these conversations. Once we get that more concrete and solidified over the next few months, we will turn toward identifying solutions to those issues and try to make a one-to-one connection that we're not just introducing goals and strategies out of nowhere, but we're really trying to solve the problems that have been, have been identified with the community. And then the last step really is to move from those solutions into more of a roadmap for how those solutions can be achieved and accomplished over that ten-year period. A few uh, hallmarks of our processes, we like to think of as we move through these master plans, Andrea said. Uh, M A P C, uh, if you don't know, we are the regional planning agency of the greater Boston area. We serve one hundred and one cities and towns, including the town Norfolk, and are uh, proud of the experience and capabilities we have in running processes like this. We were selected through a competitive process uh, for this master plan effort with the town. Uh, one of those hallmarks of our work is that we have a data-driven and interdisciplinary approach. You saw on that staff slide of our team. We have a, a really wide-ranging set of capabilities and expertise in terms of planning specialties and planners. Uh, but we focus a lot also with our data services team on having a data-driven approach and that, you, you know, looking for the data that we need to answer any of the questions that come up through this process and provide a foundation for uh, guiding where this work might head. It's also, as you can all already tell in the approach, very community-centered, and that's the center point of this process. We, we are not, uh, M A P C really is not responsible in many ways for the content of this plan. It's coming from you all, and it's coming from the community. We're, we're really like a tool, uh, almost a pen of sorts that are really gonna take this plan and get it down on paper for you. But we're not here to impose our views on the town of Norfolk. It's really your plan, and you're, you're developing the content for it. We do also, though, eh, eh, think about the regional situation. Norfolk is not an island. Uh, we have many uh, smaller historic municipalities in this region of ours, and uh, there's a lot of forces which flow beyond the municipal boundaries, including transportation, traffic congestion, uh, real estate economics and the like. Those things don't stop at Norfolk's border, so we need to, we do need to think about municipal collaboration. And also, uh, you know, very concrete services like fire and police, uh, health and safety and the like are all municipal and regional collaboration uh, considerations. We also like to think about these things through a spatial lens. What does that mean? Just looking at it more in terms of a mapping of the ideas, so it's, it's great to have bulleted lists, and that might be where some of our conversations start. But then we really want to think about where those bulleted lists are occurring geographically in the town. And that helps to really make things concrete and actionable, to not just have a nebulous idea, but to think where, where is this idea actually going to take place, and how does it, how does it work relative to other things that might be happening in that part of the town? And then we're also thinking about the overall uh, sustainability and growth patterns of the town. How does, how does growth match infrastructure? Uh, how are the schools keeping pace? How, how is all of this working together? And continuing to uh, develop uh, Norfolk in a sustainable manner uh, while building out walkability, uh, mixed-use centers and the like. So that's also a focus, uh, and what we've heard uh, is very consistent with some of the in- initial conversations that we've been having. And then lastly, uh, and this was a, a focus of the, the town's request for proposals as well as having a realistic and cost-effective approach to implementation. We don't just want the vision. We don't just want sort of um pie in the sky ideas and dreams. We, we really want to think about things that are achievable. It's, it's fine to be optimistic and ambitious, but also we need to create a pathway to get there. So uh, that, I'll just maybe pause there since I went through that relatively quickly, and it was new for some of you. Uh, but just to see if there, that sparks any questions or uh, discussion points before we move on to the next section. All right. Let's uh, let's go ahead and move on. This next section, Andrea will facilitate for us, and we're gonna share a little bit of the initial data gathering and process we have, have underway already. And then spark a conversation amongst the committee uh, that we hope will, you'll, you'll take the, take our lead and, and make it interactive even in our Zoom context. Pass it over to you, Andrea.
Thanks, Josh. Um, so as Josh mentioned, we are, you know, just at the start of this process, and one of the things that we like to do whenever we're kicking off a master plan is to really get a good understanding of present-day conditions. And so we do that in a few different ways. So um, we gathered the M A P C team and actually joined some of you. You joined us on the school bus, and we did the town tour back in December. And uh, it was really great to drive around, kind of see the key sites and facilities, neighborhoods, and then also just hear your kind of connections to the different places and the stories and the, the histories of different areas. After we did that, we really took a deep dive into looking at all of the different past planning efforts that the town has done. You all have been really busy doing a lot of different plans. So we looked at things like your recently adopted housing production plan, the open space and recreation plan, your two thousand and seven master plan we did revisit. And then we looked at some of the more in-depth tech, technical and topical studies, things like the metacomic greenway feasibility study. You had a town, some town center wastewater study, your B one zoning study and economic development strategy, just to name a few. There were a lot of past plans that gave us a good foundation for where you've been um, in past studies and policies. We also started gathering a lot of quantitative data from sources like the census, the American Community Survey, Bureau of Labor Statistics to understand your local economy, and other state and federal data sources. And we'll sh- share some of those stats and maps in a, in a few slides. Lastly, Josh and I, we spent a lot of time in February, doing a lot of meetings. We did a lot of one-on-one conversations um, kicking off by joining the town administrators monthly meeting. And then we had a series of meetings where we met one-on-one with your department heads, and then also a lot of different representatives of your towns' boards and committees. And then we also spoke to both of the school districts. And so if you go to the next slide, these one-on-one interviews really um, augmented all of the past plan review and the data analysis that we were doing because they provided a lot more insight and really helped us to understand what's going on on the ground and as residents of the town, like what the priorities are. So when we were doing these interviews, we kind of had the conversations be pretty open-ended. Um, and people were very open with us and gave us a lot of positive and honest feedback, which was really appreciated. We mo- mostly tried to ask about department or board priorities and challenges, and then also tried to get a sense for where people see the biggest opportunities lie in the town. And so we wanted to give you a little bit of a sampling of what we've been hearing in these conversations. And then hopefully you all can expand as we um, get through this portion and open it up for another bit of discussion. But probably not surprising, a lot of the conversations centered around recent growth that's occurred in Norfolk and how it's really important to maintain adequate levels of services and facilities as that growth occurs. And folks gave some really good specific examples, such as the local schools having enrollment and capacity challenges to address water and sewer considerations as growth is occurring. We've also heard, not surprising, about the housing stock in Norfolk. Um, I'm sure you all know housing costs, they've increased exponentially, and this was something that often came up in our conversations. Several people noted that there's a lack of starter home options for younger people and families, and that there's also a lack of affordable options for seniors in town who are looking to downsize and remain in Norfolk. Um, some people noted the lack of social services and com- commercial services in town. Um, a few noted that there, there's no longer really easy access to medical services, which seems especially noteworthy for a, a senior population. Um, they said that, you know, sometimes residents have to drive twenty to thirty minutes or longer to get to doctor's appointments, surgeries, or um, emergency care. They also noted the lack of commercial services like grocery stores or entertainment. And this means that you have to leave Norfolk to go do these things, and that Norfolk is also missing on on the commercial tax base and the revenue that comes with some of these commercial pieces. Um, one last note on social services. It was really interesting to hear um, some perspectives about Norfolk not really offering a lot of support services for families with lower incomes or aging residents. And so I think that might be something that we continue to hear through this process. Um, a lot of folks noted that residents are going to neighboring communities or Boston or Providence to get some of these services. And lastly, Norfolk, um, most people noted that Norfolk is a place where you do have to kind of drive to get around for the most part, that it's really hard to accommodate new sidewalks or bike lanes on most of the existing roads. And so we'll really want to, I think, hone in on the transportation options and challenges and opportunities through this process. Um, my last thing I want to know is that all in all, it was really inspiring, I think, for Josh and I to hear that through all of these conversations, there's so much pride in the nor- in, in the town. And that people very clearly love to either work or volunteer for the town and are really committed to this process. And so I think that it's setting us up to have a really good next year of engagement and conversations with community members. So shifting to the data side of things, those of you that like to crunch the numbers, we have started to gather a lot of that quantitative data. We wanted to give you just a little bit of taste of that data tonight. Um, we always begin these processes with pulling a lot of demographic data. This helps us to understand who lives in a community. And it also can help us tailor the engagement strategy that Gloria will talk about in a few minutes. Um, there are about twelve thousand people in Norfolk, and it is a predominantly white community. It's really interesting as we started looking at the demographics that we found that the majority of non-white residents in town actually are housed at the correctional facilities, meaning that they don't actively participate in town, so that's something that we may want to dig into in a future meeting. Um, there are just over three thousand households, uh, really predominantly comprised of homeowners, uh, much more than other communities that you see across the Commonwealth. Um, for the most part, Norfolk's a pretty wealthy community with the median household income being close to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's higher than the regional median household income. And while Norfolk is relatively wealthy, you can see here on the right, um, the, the hu- the housing chapter will dig into this a little bit more, but over seven hundred households in Norfolk are paying more than thirty percent of their income on housing. The threshold for being considered cost burdened, and so while you're a pretty wealthy community, that indicates that there might be some folks who are struggling, and how can Norfolk support them in their, their housing costs or other struggles that they may be having? And lastly, um, in the upper right-hand corner, we started to look at the local economy a little closer for the economic development chapter. And you can see that Norfolk's business base is comprised of just over three hundred businesses, about three thousand employees. And probably not surprising, the biggest employer is this, are the school districts. Um, Norfolk has a, a mostly smaller businesses. So we'll continue to explore these data points and topics in more detail in future meetings as we really start to deep dive into those policy topic areas that Josh mentioned. Um, we have two other things. It's always nice to. Um, we have two other things. It's always nice to kind of show the, the pretty maps in this process. So we wanted to give you a sense for cut, some of the maps that we're starting to develop and really dig into that spatial analysis for the plan. Um, so this is an example of one of the transportation maps that we'll be looking at more closely in the future. This is mapping the pedestrian facilities, so sidewalks and trails, different types of um walking paths. And we looked at commute patterns and saw that eighty-seven percent of folks are driving alone when they're commuting to and from work and about ten percent are taking transit. So that may or may not be surprising, given that Norfolk does have a commuter rail station. And the last slide of data, this is just another map to show, um, we mapped the community services and facilities. So through this planning process, there will be a, a chapter on community services and facilities where we'll be looking more closely at how your capital facilities are meeting needs and what you're doing to improve those. And then also how are services um meeting the needs of residents and where there might be some areas for improvement. So again, we just wanted to give you a little bit of a teaser for what's to come in future meetings, where we'll deep dive into all of these different topics. But we wanted to give you a sense at a high level of what we're seeing from the data and through those interviews. But now I think we'd love to turn it over to you all to tell us maybe what surprises you of these just initial statistics. But then also, as you're thinking about this process, what main issues do you want to make sure that we know about? Or we want to reiterate things that we've already heard? And what priorities do you think may emerge or may already have emerged that you want to put a kind of like exclamation point on, on for us tonight?
So I'm happy to start with the uh, with the prizes. Um, I, I think that I'm not necessarily surprised by this. Um, the, the usage of the commuter rail in particular. I know there was a significant downturn with COVID and the pandemic. Um, traffic hasn't really uh returned to what it was previously. Um, and so there's really no true incentive to utilize the commuter rail, especially with a uh significant, again, degradation of the service over time. Um, so I'm not surprised there, uh, there's a possibility for cost savings. Um, I wonder if there's anything the town can do um to kind of support commuters uh and the utilization of the commuter rail more, kind of start driving topic. And hopefully, hopefully more attention to the, the quality of the service um provided as such. The other piece was around the limited starter homes. Um, I understand that to be a significant point for sure. Um, having been in that position, uh, you know, whenever we first started looking, um, but I think that's more uh a statement about the current real estate environment more than anything. I think uh, you know, any home that was worth worth it, it was just artificially inflated uh clockwise based on the, the market and the limited amount of houses uh for sale. So hopefully that'll get rectified soon.
Yeah, I think that you're spot on. It's definitely something that everywhere is challenged with right now. So it's um, yeah, not surprising, but still important. Thank you.
Piggybacking on what Chris just said with the, with the starter home piece, is there is there like a balance effect with rental units, whether they're one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? That could take place of the need or, or the want for starter homes? Or is it just a different mindset? People want a starter home, want to start a home? Doesn't matter if they can get into Norfolk via one, two, three-bedroom apartments?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really great question. I think that, that's something that we think about when we're doing planning is that there is just this personal preference to eventually own a home. And so I think that it's finding that right balance of having the rental options, but then still maybe having some of those homeownership options at a lower price point.
Gotcha. And I'll just mention, it wasn't really a surprise, but you know, because I think Josh mentioned to it in passing when we were talking um during the tour, uh, the bus tour that we did, the field trip. But yeah, the uh, our demographic graphics, which already seem pretty, um, I don't want to say bad. But you know, they just seem a little skewed based off of what I think most people want when they think about diversity and inclusion. Uh, some of those numbers are actually buffeted by, by the prison, so um I would love to get to the bottom of what the real numbers are eventually. That'll be very interesting, I think.
Yeah, we are trying to figure out if we can break out those numbers more. I don't think our data folks have figured out quite how to do that yet. But that is something we're pursuing, we're trying to better understand. Thanks.
When it's worth, it's significantly improved from when I first moved in uh ten years ago. It's a double.
That's great.
Like these, I'd like to see an age breakdown in the demographics as well. Um, how many of the population are uh above the age of sixty, for instance? As opposed to adults between, say, thirty and sixty and under the age of thirty?
Yeah, that sounds great. And so it's a little hard to hear you. I don't know if it's my computer. Oh, there we go. That's perfect. Thanks. We can, we do have age breakdown demographics and we can be sure to share those next time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, real quick on that point from the document that I have from uh, from you, it says over half of the population is between thirty-five to sixty-four, with six percent of it under eighty. So you can kind of do some quick math to identify the over sixty-four.
Thanks.
This is Dan. I think one of the things that surprised me, um, you know, we moved here in November of nineteen and obviously COVID hit. So, you know, for our first really two years here, nobody was doing anything in the world. Uh, but I'm surprised here about the number of businesses. Um, and I know that there are resource constraints in the town, you know, for even future development, whether it's water and other resources. Uh, but I think a, a priority that may emerge, um, and something that I think about a lot is, um, you know, driving the right business to Norfolk. You know, it's not necessarily um putting some big box retail. I mean, I, I think a lot of the clients that I work with always talk about like placemaking. And I think there are a lot of pockets in, in Norfolk where it makes sense. Um, so I think it would be, I, I think a priority that would emerge, you know, and I know there's a theme of everybody always has to go twenty minutes to do something. Um, so not necessarily saying, hey, let's put a bunch of big box retail, but are there ways to activate certain parts of town? Um, you know, within the resource constraints and that, you know, that really fits what the town's looking for. I don't think everybody wants like a bunch of chains going right down Main Street. Maybe they do, but um, you know, it'd be interesting to see if there's ways to kind of do some placemaking in town um with, with more business and, and the appropriate retailer, commercial services.
I would just pig on that. Somebody that's family has been here two and a half years and selfishly, we're, we're within walking distance of the B one. So for, for downtown and we can walk there. Um, and I think to, to your point, right, is that smart development? It, yeah, not big box stores, not becoming Franklin or something like that. Still keep the character i- in the charm of the town, but there's a, a little bit uh, are there ways to get more commercial? You know, maybe in the B one or, or downtown. So just something that I'm, I'm looking forward to.
Yeah, I think that's actually a common theme around the town. Um, I've been here five and a half years. The downtown hasn't, you know, it hasn't changed very much in that time. Um, and in my conversations with people who are business owners, small business owners, I think the kinds of businesses that um, the guys were alluding to that, you know, we would probably want here. Um, when I've asked them why they've left Norfolk, it's a combination of things. One is, we don't have, one of them is a restaurant. Um, we don't have the septic downtown uh to be able to support that. Um, so he would be certainly open to looking at, you know, space in Norfolk. We also don't have a lot of um infrastructure, really. I mean, that we have that, um, you know, we saw on our little walk. Um, after we got off of our little bus tour, the downtown across from Walgreens is not developed. Um, and if that was, I think that's, that's what I hear most often, is that people would love to see, you know, cute little boutiques, restaurants, um, things like that. And then of course, we could have some of the um residential above that. Um, that's mostly what I hear. And I think the issue is, A, there's no buildings, um, that would actually support something like a restaurant in that downtown area. And B, we really need to have a septic there that would be able to support that as well.
And selfishly, I would love that. But yeah.
Me too, Pat.
And again, appreciate everybody that, that did work on, on the B one committee. I know, yeah, I haven't been here that long, but I know a lot of thought and effort went into that. And there's some utility constraints and things like that. But I would, I would think, um, just for us and being able to, within a walking distance, bar, restaurant, mixed use. Like, I look at those two lots every day. I, I understand the challenges, but that would be great for five, ten years down the road.
Yeah, and I, I think the town's done a really good job of activating like the town, uh, like the town hill, right? The tree lighting is and the farmer's market is. I think those things are great. So I think there's a way to sort of build off that. Um, but this is just a question um to some of the people maybe in the planning board that know. Cause I know there's been a lot of studies about um like resources, uh, resource constraints, whether it's water or, or sewage. Um, is there anybody that could, you know, maybe quickly point me somewhere to where I could look up some of those reports, just like if I memorize myself with them? Or is it just going on the town website and trying to search around?
Do you want to speak a little bit?
Yeah, so if you go to the planning board page, now there's a master plan, a webpage there that it's run through M A P C. And some of the reports that Josh had mentioned earlier, uh, one of them is the wastewater study. You should be able to find it there. Um, let's just look as we're talking about it.
So, sorry, quick, quick question. Just those of us who are new might not know all the history with maybe like the B one or downtown. In addition to say some of the utility studies, do you guys have anywhere documented so we don't have to necessarily waste your time to rehash history? Of like, hey, here's the things that we've tried here where the issues is, anywhere where we could look for that?
So a lot of the documentation you'll be able to sort um, find on the town's website. Um, another great resource is uh N C T D's YouTube page. All the majority of our meetings um have been recorded and archived there and can be reviewed. Um, it's hard from a, a topic perspective to kind of pin down, um, sometimes which meetings were suppressing what. But there are specific meetings called out with regards to, let's say, the wastewater study, um, conversations. Those were separate meetings. Um, the fire uh apartment um meetings were there as well. Uh, and then I believe the B one meetings are recorded and, and deserve their also.
Yeah, but we really don't have like a cheat sheet, right? Like I think that like, I don't know, planning board's got enough going on, so they don't want to throw us uh, you know, more work to do. But like if somebody could volunteer to do a cheat sheet of what we've talked about in the last five years about B one development, what, what our obstacles are. Um, and then we can have appendices as links there. I, I mean, I'm not home. If, if I get home, I'll more than happy to take that on and post it on the website. But I think that I, I've got that question enough from just my su- you know, small circle of friends in town. Uh, it's been brought up here and you know, I think that having that kind of cheat sheet format, whether it's a PowerPoint or a webpage or something, would have a lot of value for this whole process. Cause we're gonna have people outside the ambassadors and uh this committee that are gonna wanna, you know, just catch up really, really quick.
Yeah, it, yeah. Many more work for you guys. I know you guys got a ton on your plate. I appreciate it. But uh, yeah, I think the hell, I'm talking to, to my neighbors, right? Just a quick summary. Hey, here's what we've done in the past here, what the issues were. I think that would be a cheat sheet, just to spread the word a little bit.
Yeah, and have, have we, uh, and I, again, I apologize, I'll dig around too, but if it's a quick answer, great. If not, somebody can tell me to stop, stop talking. Um, I, I mean, has the town done like, uh, I assume the town's done like, uh, you know, it would cost X dollars to remedy the water issue. And I know it's not that black and white, uh, but the, the town's done that analysis previously, or have they?
So in terms of the uh, just on the topic on the wastewater for town center. So we are still in the midst of working on that right now. So there was just quickly bullet points. We identified a, a new wa- wastewater treatment plant that would accommodate future growth plus the existing businesses in the town. And the ballpark is five to seven million dollars for a wastewater treatment plant between the plant and the system for, for town center. Um, we're right in, we're, as we speak, we're still collecting more data uh for the viability and feasibility of it. Um, so just to, to give you a a general overview of that.
Thanks. That's, that's, that's good. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
And I'll play it out.
I think probably, I'm, uh, what I would say is we can, um, I'll think about how to best kind of put that into some quick bullet points for people. As we go through the process, almost like a cheat sheet, if you will, like Cliff Notes, the old days, I guess Cliff Notes, but on different topics.
Um, I was going to add that Eric um dropped a link to the project webpage on the chat. And we've started to put some of those past plans at the bottom of the webpage. We can try to upload a few more that we've looked at. And then as we do bring topics to you, we'll have sort of summaries of some of that work that'll go into the final plan. So that can be a point at one um in the future that you can see some of the write-ups and bullet points, but we don't have all of those yet together. Thanks Eric. Are there any other thoughts, issues, priorities or surprises that folks want to share?
I would maybe not consider it a surprise, huh? I guess I would wanna, I think it'll be interesting to go through the process in terms of, from the economic development side. I know that, you know, some of the comments that talked about the type of businesses that townsfolk would like to see in town and, and what kind of maybe potential measures the town would have an appetite for, to create some incentives for those? Cause I, I think we probably, we do know some of the barriers. Some are, you know, some are infrastructure related, but some may also be market related to, like some of the things that people worried about more likely than not wouldn't come to the areas that they, that people are concerned about, because it just doesn't make sense from a market standpoint. So those, those larger retail kind of sets, but the, but how we can try to see what, what the appetite might be for different incentives for, to encourage some development in these areas.
Well, sounds good, Rich. Thanks.
One of the things that uh I guess um didn't surprise me, I spent the weekend reading the entire two thousand and seven master plan. And having been here since nineteen eighty-six, uh, I was back here when my impression of Norfolk was um, three intersections, some houses and a lot of farmhouses and trees, a lot of farming land and trees. Um, reading the two thousand and seven plan, the thing that struck me was how much of that plan had actually been accomplished. Um, and the numbers, the projections on residents, the number of residents in the town and the number of households was almost spot on. And we're talking about two thousand and seven from two thousand and twenty-three. You can do the math. That was a long time ago. That's pretty darn accurate for a forecast. Um, it also gave me the sense, having a long view of all this and having raised a family here and experienced the changes in uh taxation and insurance costs and water provisions and the drought seasons and so on and so forth. Um, it gave me a sense that um, as I learned in business, you can sit down and practically model just about any kind of business outcome you want, given the resources you have on that. And, and that really kind of defines Norfolk. Because if we're destined to want to stay a rural community that is mostly households with some businesses, then that will shape the financial underpinning that defines what kind of maneuvering room we have in order to do the things we want to accomplish. On the other hand, if we're quite willing to obliterate the rural lifestyle and use all available land to turn into a Franklin where we put a business on every available square footage in order to drive tax revenue, that is a different business model for the town. And so my long view on all of this, in addition to bringing kind of the senior point of view is do we want to remain the same kind of community ten years from now that we are today? Or do, i- i- and in preserving that, what adjustments do we want to make? And therefore, what are the trade-offs? Because uh, as I experienced firsthand in the recent town meeting regarding the new firehouse and approving the budget for all of that, there were some people who were extremely passionate about not raising costs in the town of Norfolk. Um, and yet the, the fire um infrastructure, the fire emergency response infrastructure that we need to have for a community like our size and which is growing, it necessitates a further investment unless we want to find ourselves ten years from now facing an MBPA situation all over again in our own town. And we don't want to do that. So because i- if we're going to define ourselves in the master plan because i- if we're going to define ourselves in the master plan as being ten years from now, still a relatively rural community, then we have to face the fact that we have some ceilings on our heads financially that only taxation of households can solve unless there is some magic wand that businesses can unlock. Can we incrementally improve business residents in the town of Norfolk? Yeah, we probably can, and we should look at doing all of that. And if water um, and sewage are a key portion of that, then we need to figure out if the money that it would cost to invest in that would unlock that um, and get us exponentially more tax income or only marginally more taxing. So my, my view of all this process is in looking backwards, I learned an awful lot from that, looking at that two thousand and seven plan and looked at all of the sidewalks that were installed, the streets that were paved, the um, uh, children's uh, areas that were built that didn't exist. All of the business development that happened around the one A uh, area of town, which I is very nearby where I live. When I moved in, I have to tell you, that place looked like Mars. I mean, it was a dumping place for people to just dump things and kids ran dirt bikes back there year after year after year. And now it is completely different and it is contributing to the tax base. So, you know, my, my kind of big surprise was how much was actually accomplished based on that plan. So if we have that same kind of vision and thought process about not just saying, here's what we want, but also thinking about what does our business model need to be to underpin all of that, I think that'll be a step in the right direction.
That's great. And I think that's a good summary of where we're heading and what we're trying to figure out and a good way to think of it. I like the business model analogy. Thanks, Joe. Any other last thoughts before we can move over to community engagement and I'll let Gloria introduce herself? Oh, go ahead, Rich.
No, I was just clapping. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Thanks. Thank you. All right. So maybe I'll turn it over to Gloria to talk about community engagement.
Awesome. Thanks Andrea. Hi, everybody. Again, my name is Gloria Huang Pu. I am a community engagement specialist at MAPC. Um, and excited to talk with you all and continue the conversation uh, that we're already getting into about community engagement. Um, and really centering community engagement as part of this master planning process so that we can make sure um, as this roadmap to the future for the Norfolk community, that it's really reflecting what um, as large a swath as possible of Norfolk residents um, see for the future and, and want for the future. Um, and of course, this group, the master plan steering committee is going to be really critical to making sure that our community engagement plan is on track, um, since these are your neighbors and friends and communities that we're talking about engaging. Um, so for our time today, I know you all did receive a copy of the community engagement plan already, but I wanted to just highlight some um, high level uh, areas um, and get your feedback. Um, so I'll talk through a couple of slides and then we'll pause for another little bit of conversation. Um, and also if we have time, um, want to get sort of an initial round of input from you all that we can integrate into the community agent plan when it comes to the stakeholders that we should be thinking about in the Norfolk community. So we'll do a little stakeholder analysis uh, activity. Um, but with, for, for a quick overview, starting with the communication goals here, this is really a high level summary of what's in the plan, but a couple of um, principles that we really uh, in general, trying to follow in at MAPC when we do community engagement, but feel um, especially important here. Um, starting first with innovation and creativity. Um, just keeping that in mind as we think about how to meet people where they are um, across the Norfolk community, especially considering um, the folks that uh, Andrea highlighted earlier talking through the demographics um, and groups among, among those demographics who might not historically have been engaged or be familiar with um, municipal processes. The second one there is full circle communication, making sure that the folks that we're engaging with feel heard, feel that we're being responsive and taking their feedback in um, in a timely manner. Um, and that they see sort of end to end how to keep in, keep being involved in the project. The third one there is um, accessibility and transparency. So making sure that anyone can be involved in the engagement, whatever their abilities look like, um, while also making sure we're not overburdening community members with requests. Um, especially with a long process like this, that can be a concern. So we're gonna uh, be really mindful of that. And lastly, um, where you'll see that we're really trying to be dynamic and iterative with this community engagement plan and just be nimble to what we learn as we go along the process. And so with that said, on the next page, um, this just sort of takes all of those goals and puts it in a timeline to show how we're gonna go about putting all of those goals into action and getting the input that we need to um, develop the plan. Uh, I think Andrea had mentioned earlier that we've already started a lot of preparatory work. So you can see under that first Chevron in the timeline, a lot of these items are checked off. We had that fun town tour with the bus, um, which I know a lot of our MAPC colleagues really enjoyed. Um, and uh, some of the meetings that Josh and Andrea mentioned earlier, um. And then now we're really uh, ramping up for an awareness campaign highlighted in that green color there. Um, and that'll lead into our first community forum on visioning. Um, so we'll dive into the awareness campaign and the community forum in a little bit. But just to continue with this overview timeline, um, after that first forum, we'll uh, go into some deep dive workshops, either by topic or neighborhood, still TBD. Um, and you can see here at the bottom uh, or on the last bullet uh, in that second column there, that's this first point that we built into the process for reflection on the engagement. Um, and we've built out a few checkpoints for this throughout the engagement process, just to consider whether we need to shift our strategy, um, either by, i- it could be doing additional focus groups with pockets of the community that we haven't been able to uh, reach through broader engagement or adding in new um, communication channels we learn about or events and festivals and things like that to our engagement calendar. So um, just again, being dynamic and nimble as we go through the process. Um, so that, you know, if, if the items that are bulleted on this page here aren't necessarily getting us the information we need, we can be responsive to that. Um, next you'll see that in late summer and through the fall, we'll uh, be working on the MAPC team on drafting up goals uh, for the plan and in the community engagement, on the community engagement side of things, going out with a community forum, another awareness campaign and another survey to get input on those draft goals. Um, with the hope of then wrapping everything up by early twenty twenty four um, and having that final community comment period there. So um, with that said, that's just a really brief overview of what's in a much longer community engagement plan. Um, you probably haven't had a chance to look through it all yet, which is why I wanted to do a quick overview here. Um, but with that said, um, on the next page, um, would love to just hear any initial reactions that you have, anything that seems to be missing um, from that timeline that we just looked at. Anything that could be refined um, and thoughts on how to maximize participation, um, especially for folks who might not be as familiar again with working uh, in planning processes with municipal government. Um, and again, as a preview, this will sort of lead us into a little stakeholder mapping exercise um, where we'll dive into some more of these questions.
I have a question. This is Joe.
Sure.
Um, so I saw in the previous slide, your comment about um, getting information by neighborhood. What about getting information from business owners in the town?
That's a great question. Um, yeah, I think that's something that we're still, that's still a little bit up in the air. Our initial thought was to do neighborhood based um, deep dive workshops that that could include business owners within those neighborhoods. Um, we could invite them to join each of the neighborhood based ones. I think alternatively, we were thinking about um, potentially doing topic based workshops that would be open to anyone across town. Um, and in that case, we could, for example, do a, an economic development specific workshop and that would maybe be more of interest to business owners. Um, although obviously there's like, there, there's going to be connections across um, all of the topics. So uh, if, if folks have thoughts on which of those directions might make more sense, I think this could be a good opportunity to talk through that.
To Joe's point, it might make sense to reach out to uh, you know, small business um, organizations and talk with them directly. Additionally, um, there's a, a couple of significant uh, community events that happen around the June timeline, June tenth in particular is community day.
Yeah.
And so um, ensuring that you're there to speak to the community and, and talk to them about uh, what's going on. Um, we've spoken a little bit about farmers markets, obviously, as well as uh, uh, food truck events that we do on the um, the lawn on Town Hill. Um, I think um, there's also an opportunity while it might be a, a bit mixed, um, Pondville wants the, the sports uh, start um, up in the spring, hanging out there on a weekend, Saturday, Sunday in particular. Um, also understanding the, the KP school uh, game schedule. Um, that is going to be a little bit mixed bag since it's Tri County School. Um, but you could identify uh, opportunities to beat to Norfolk residents there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's also a community forum for the expansion of uh, Freeman Kennedy, which might provide an opportunity before or after that. I think that's next week. Is that right, Rich? Or is it twenty first or something?
Yes, it is the twenty first.
Instead of that, I think uh, overall, that's a good plan.
Yes, I should note that we didn't, we didn't include all of the um, festivals and, and dates that you all had shared previously in that timeline, but um, we have them in a more detailed version. Any other initial reactions to the engagement plan here? If not, um, definitely feel free to take a closer look through the document that was shared before tonight's meeting and feel free to reach out if you do have any other thoughts or comments. Um, it's certainly something that we'll be returning to over the course of the process. And um, these community engagement plans are always living documents again, so that we can be dynamic and nimble as we're moving through the process and updating it based on new information.
I have a question.
Sure.
For really the steering committee, actually, so uh, in terms of where we are, the, we are doing some pre-planning for the community engagement workshop um, in April, I'm waiting for confirmation at the school, but my question is more like getting the word out in terms of when I might grab, you know, what's a good time to get the word out? Maybe it's not too far out, like where do we get people's attentions like that process? So we, you know, maximize it. So you know, is it, if you get it too far out, it become, you know, it's too far out. Yeah, what's that?
When in April?
Um, looks like the, well, the twenty fifth is the one I, I put in for the April twenty fifth.
Uh, um, so you should be clear from a, you know, school vacation. I know sometimes people go either at the beginning and the end, just to kind of uh, absolve themselves of some of the additional costs that we find ourselves uh, having to deal with around that time. Um, you probably want to give about three weeks notice.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think it's necessarily too early right now. I think we'll just, it might even be nice to give people a heads up, but um, and then send reminders, um, whether it's on the Norfolk Facebook page, community page, or, you know, just so that people know it's coming and then we remind them um, again, that it's coming and then maybe the night before people, you know, get pretty bombarded between the school meetings and messages and all the different town meetings and there's, seems like there's something every night. So if we could give um, them a heads up as far in advance, I mean, I think this would be appropriate, you know, a month or so before, um, and then some reminders that'd probably be helpful.
Okay.
They use a font that really sticks out like comics, you know, Comic Sans and like a pink, pink color. Don't get them.
Alvedica or bust?
There you go.
Okay.
Well.
I, I, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to echo back to what Chris is saying. The last conversation we had or the, you know, three minutes ago, it's a lot easier to go find them than it is for them to come to us. So, you know, as long as we're putting in the effort to reach out and show up at these places, the engagement tends to be a lot better.
Hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah.
Does anybody else think it might be appropriate to put this thing right on the front of the webpage? And I'll kind of like cross the, the top banner and leave it there for a year. It's kind of very important, their land use right now and.
And the Facebook page too, a lot of people are on the community Facebook.
But what Eric's saying.
The town website, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't control the.
I'm with you.
Facebook group, so. But I, I agree.
And I think it's so Karen Riley, who's an administrator of the Norfolk Facebook page, she um, she comes to all of our meetings. Um, so I think she would think this is important, so we could certainly reach out to her and see what she has for suggestions to maybe have something on that page. Um, see what she has for suggestions, whether it's, you know, I don't know if there's a way to do a banner or uh, you know, one of those photos or that you stick in the cover area or whatever she thinks is appropriate, but we can certainly ask her.
For the, for the town page, Justin's on the call. Justin, is, is that something that's feasible or is that, you know, like, can like, we make a request to have a sticky banner on the Norfolk dot mass dot U S page? That, that kind of highlights the stuff?
Is that directing me?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I didn't hear the question fully. Sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, no, it's okay. So talk about how, you know, how do we maximize our particip- uh, participation for this sort of thing? So we're thinking like, could there be a call to action or a banner or something on the town website? Right? That would hot link to, you, one, it's a, you know, it's a notification thing. So if you go to Norfolk that mass that you ask, you know, it says, hey, we're, you know, we are creating master plan twenty thirty five. You know, here's your chance to get information or put, you know, provide input. Um, and then that could hot link to whatever page, land use page that we have set up for that sort of thing. Is, is that feasible?
Yeah, that's feasible. I think I, yeah, I I have more technical agility advanced people in my team, so I appreciate like an email, but sent to my team and yeah, we can figure out. Also, we also partner with um, Gilfoil Public Relations. And we've been doing like press releases, so maybe I can have them work on a press release and coordinate with Rich. And we can get that out to the media as well when we do, if we do that on the website too, so we can link it in a variety of ways.
That's a great idea, Justin. I actually didn't even think of that, but the um, between, you know, like the, if the press release gets picked up, it will end up in the Sun Chronicle, it'll end up in the Norfolk Rhythm News or so.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'll certainly get the message out there. That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Additionally, uh, do we have a, do we have a way to um, report email addresses for those who are interested in learning more about the master plan? Um, we can, you know, kind of uh, do a newsletter to reach out.
Uh, yes. So on the, on the website, we have uh, we have set up, we haven't done it yet. You can, you can go in actually on the web, on the town webpage and sign up for email blast for the uh, let's see. So what master plan? What's that?
I said, I'm sold. Let's set it up. I said, I'm sold. Let's set it up.
There, there's a mechanism on the project website as well, a, a button, which is a sign up for a newsletter. Um, that we would uh, also M A P C operate. So that's on the, the website link that Eric posted earlier.
So it would be good with that, what would be good with that would be um, a QR code for whenever you're in one of these public areas. Someone can, you know, maybe have a sign that's next to you saying, for more information, you know, sign up for our newsletter. Snap the QR code, sign up and uh, start getting blasts.
Yeah, I wonder if um, this is actually a good point to skip ahead to a couple of our slides on communications and outreach. So we can come back to the stakeholder analysis. But um, this is again, the website that Eric can drop the link to. Um, we have a a bitly sort of short range link here, so you can just type in M A P C dot M A slash backslash Norfolk twenty thirty five and get to the, that same page. And you can see um, where the arrow indicates that sign up button for uh, the M A P C uh, newsletter that, or rather email list. Um, and at the end of the project, we would of course make sure that, Rich, you have the list that you can integrate it with the town uh, newsletter list that you already have. Um, so that's one place to direct people as you're, as you're just starting to talk about this with your friends and networks. Um, if people want to keep up to date, that would be a really great place to go to sign up for our, our email list. Um, and then just quickly on the next page, Josh, thank you. Um, this is our initial draft of a flyer that we'd be able to distribute across town with just information about the master plan process in general. Um, and then we covered it with, with a drafts. This is still a draft form, but in the middle of the page there, you can see information about the next uh, a- about that first visioning forum that would be coming up. Um, with a, another uh, uh, bitly link, we can certainly add a QR code here to your point, Chris. Um, and it's something that would have a consistent visual style to the, the comments that folks are ringing up earlier. Not Comic Sans. I don't think our design uh, and communications team would be um, okay with that unfortunately. But I think a, a nice spot, uh, they chose a nice spot here. Um, and so we're really hoping to kick off pretty soon a general awareness campaign um, to make sure, as we're discussing, folks are aware of the master plan starting. Um, with the goal that that would sort of lead us into um, you know, good awareness building and communication uh, outreach for that first forum at the end of April. Um, so we have this flyer, we put together sort of outreach toolkit with some additional copy that you could use on social media posts and emails. Um, and so we'll, we'll certainly be working with Rich to get all of this up on the towns channels. But as much as possible, if the steering committee can help with sharing this with your networks. Um, that would be really appreciated. And I think really ultimately how we're going to reach again, but the residents and community of Norfolk. So I'll pause there.
You know, we don't have a lot of businesses in town, but there are a few where, you know, like Dunkin Donuts is very busy in the morning. Still is, is very busy in the morning. Maybe, um, I mean, I wouldn't mind. I know I've gone into, I've worked with both of their one owner and one manager, um, at each of them before, so I know them um, somewhat well. So I could see if maybe we could leave them there or have a spot where people could see them. Um, you know, as they're popping in and out too, if that, if you think that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. That would be very helpful.
Is this April meeting uh, in person? Or talking about this is at the school?
Hmm, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. That's the one that Rich is still working on confirming, um, but should be at the school on April twenty fifth.
And what do you need the R S V P for?
Um, so we usually for M A P C events like to just include an R S V P um, to get a sense of the number of folks that we could expect to attend. Uh, it's also a good way to then, you can include and ask if you want to be added to our email list. Um, so we certainly, we don't need to have the R S V P, but uh, generally something that we've developed as a, a regular practice.
We probably will not have the R S V P based on some other workshops that we've done, but maybe try to accomplish the same thing differently to get people to sign up. You know, maybe, because I know when we were doing the housing production plan and you know, we simply wanted to have the R S V P and it just became too clunky. I think people, you know.
Yeah.
I get it. Be great to know how many we got coming in and get R S V P, but it.
Yeah.
Didn't seem to work well. Uh, I will tell you one strategy that we did in the housing production plan, which we probably won't do, is we did send out a mailer and that was not an effective tool to really get people engaged. Um, but we do plan to uh, just so, so the steering committee knows to work with uh, Karen Riley to the community page. Uh, the police department has agreed to, to put um, the flyers out onto their, their web. The Facebook page too, so that, that's been happening behind the scenes in terms of um, and then likewise, I, I'm on the community page myself. I could post, I did it um, for one of the hazard mitigation planning workshops we had, which was effective. So um, and yes, Andrea reminds me the schools have offered to help as well, spread the word. So just to give you a, just an overview that some of those things are already being lined up. Um, we don't, I don't, the one thing I don't think we have touched is Josh was maybe doing a cable. We definitely reached out to Norfolk Cable, but I don't, we haven't reached out to them yet about maybe doing a master plan show, I don't think, right?
Not a, not a show specifically, but we would want to coordinate with them about the forum and see what kind of um, on live stream or hybrid type of offerings we could have for the, the uh, community forum on the twenty fifth of April.
Alright.
Yeah, and if they're able to post the flyer as sort of advertisement beforehand for anyone who's.
We, we did talk about doing like a master plan primer TV show thing. I think we, against his will, voted uh, Chad as the spokesperson for that. He's not here. But maybe you can just throw him completely under the bus and say he'll do it and he'll get it together.
Yeah, no, it's.
It'd be great.
Yeah, I think it would, it would be good to have a if we could do a show.
Hmm. Yeah. Yeah, I think all of these, all of these ideas are really um, a great transition into the, this uh, stakeholder analysis activity. Because this is exactly the kind of information I was hoping we could discuss here. Um, essentially, the, the stakeholder mapping activity is a way of uh, just helping us on the M A P C team gather all the information like this that we're already discussing from the brains of everyone on the steering committee. Um, since again, you, you all know where you go to get information about what's happening in town. Um, you know where people hang out, um, and all of the different sort of pockets and groups across town. So um, with that said, I've been, I've been trying to take notes and start uh, adding some of these ideas into this jam board. Um, but Josh, if you don't mind opening up that jam board, um, I was thinking we could sort of transition this conversation uh, to the jam board platform as a way to just continue the brainstorming. Um, and then eventually, once we've wrapped up tonight, I'll be planning on going ahead and taking all this information that we brainstorm um, and putting it back into, bringing it back to the, the community engagement plan. Um, so that we are capturing all the integrating it and thinking about sort of when would we want to uh, tag any of these um, community, communication channels or groups to help us get the word out um, about uh, our various uh, events and engagement opportunities. Um, so, yes, and thank you Andrea for, for sticking the link in the chat. Um, definitely feel free to pop in there and add any ideas as we're talking through this. But um, I'll just give us a quick overview of what the jam board consists of here. So on this first page that we're looking at, um, the prompt is who are the local stakeholders? We should engage in the Norfolk master planning process. And we've included some prompts for different groups that we might want to think about. Um, whether it's volunteer groups, um, social services, businesses. Um, and you can see Josh is giving an example here of um, adding a post-it note. So it looks like folks here are pretty familiar with Jam Board already, which is great. Um, and then you'll see that on the second slide, if you don't mind, just quickly, Josh, going over there. Um, this is less about who and more about how uh, you get in touch with folks. So outreach channels that we should use to get the word out. Um, whether it's like newsletters, listeners, email listeners, um, capturing more of those uh, specific community festivals and events, social media accounts. Um, anything like that that you think would be helpful to us. Um, so you can see I, I added Silas and Duncan as local gathering spaces that you mentioned, Melissa. Um, but we can go through and uh, continue populating this page together. And feel free to, to shout out ideas if you uh, aren't familiar with Jam Board or aren't able to add yourself. And we can help add them for you. Awesome. Looks like some great options already being added here. Um, and Joe, I'm seeing your message about senior groups. That is definitely one that we should add on here. Um, apologies for that oversight. Let me add seniors here. Um, and again, feel free to shout out if, if you have any thoughts on you know, groups that serve seniors or places where seniors like to gather that we should include. What we thinking about?
Oh, okay, good. Somebody put Riverside Association. That's over fifty five, correct?
Hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, this is Donna Jones.
Hi, Donna.
Um, we have one printed newspaper that gets delivered to all households. And it comes out the first of every month. It happens to be the reporter lives in Norfolk and they have a deadline of the fifteenth of the month. So like tomorrow would be the deadline. If you want to get something in there to be published on April first. It's to, like to announce this meeting.
Who is the contact person, Donna?
Grace Kelly. Um, give me a minute and I can come back with her email.
Okay, thank, thank you for that information. That's very helpful.
Oh, I have the email. Are you ready or should I put it in the chat?
You, you can give it to verbally if you'd like.
Editor at Norfolk Rantham News dot com.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, I know that we said um, we would be about an hour and a half here and I don't, I think, does the planning board have other business that they need to get to? Is that, is it important for us to, because you all could continue with this effort and we, we can, we're very close to wrapping the master plan committee meeting up if you'd like to do so.
We do. Um, why don't we take uh, about two more minutes just at the jam board? And then we can uh, wrap it up and then we'll move on to other business.
Good. After this, we just have next step. So we're, we're very close, but.
Right, okay. So we'll just do about a minute and a half at this point and then we'll move on. Be honest on the time, Josh.
It does look like uh, great, Gloria might have dropped off our call.
I think, I think Gloria lost power, so I saw the message. So hopefully everything's okay um, at Gloria's house, but she, I think, might not be able to join us.
Okay, so we'll, we will continue on in her absence and uh, finish up, wrap up the jam boarding. So thank you all for the suggestions. We'll combine these with our own um, completion of this analysis and start looking at connecting with these various stakeholder groups and the channels that would get, get us to them.
Is Donna still on?
Yes, she is.
Donna, is the deadline tomorrow like end of day? Is there a time? Do you know by any chance? Just curious.
I don't.
Okay. So they'll try to.
In general, they say the fifteenth. I, I would think you could contact her and say, you know, ask her.
Ri- Rich, sometimes they're flexible. I think if you contact her tomorrow, then if we, sometimes it can be flexible, I think, so.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to, it'd be awesome if I can get just confirmation from the school that uh, we do have the cafeteria, you know, Freeman Kennedy for the twenty fifth. Then we can push that out now, you know, so try to.
Alright, so it looks like we're about at our time for jam boarding. So let's just, I'll go through, just take a quick look at the results with you all. So thank you for helping to fill in the local stakeholder groups. We have a lot, a lot more post-its than we did previously, so we appreciate that. And feel free, if, if you do want to think on this or you have an idea to jump back into this link, if, if you want to add, add one later on. We'll keep this link open. Um, and then also, if we look over at the, the various channels again, uh, a lot of great ideas and some that we covered verbally in this conversation as well. But we'll uh, be hitting all these channels and more o- over the course of this process and trying to get as, as many people to be knowledgeable of it going on. And what, what we try to avoid, although it's often hard and sometimes difficult, but is having someone arrive at the end of this process during the final comment period about twelve to fourteen months from now and say that they never knew that the town was doing a master plan. Um, so that's, that's one of the things we, we really try hard to uh, not have happen. But it always seems like someone, someone makes their way through the, the net of information. Um, so let's go ahead and stop this here and I'll, I'll wrap us up with some next steps, just to give you a feel for where we're headed. Uh, particularly with the next month in mind. Alright, so in terms of next steps, uh, really, uh, the, the next date which will arrive on your calendar as a steering committee would be the next steering committee meeting. And that would be uh, coinciding with the next planning board meeting on Tuesday, April eleventh. Uh, at the same time that we started this evening at seven P M. Um, potentially, um, I, I guess I'll probably jinx it by saying something about April weather, but hopefully we would not have an April snow shower. Um, and can all meet in person on that evening. Um, I think the, the task at hand, which we'll begin to get out to you all via some emails. Uh, once we get the date confirmed and the flyer, uh, therefore confirmed as well, we'll get some materials out to you all to begin to spread the word with us. And we'll be hitting all those channels we just described uh, to get the word out um, between now and the, the middle of April. I, I agree that it's not too early to start just uh, building a knowledge uh, and awareness of the master plan and specifically of that date and getting it on people's calendars. And maybe even dare I say, building some excitement about this process and, and a planning meeting on the horizon. So uh, that would be the, the order of the day. We'll have. So uh, that would be the the order of the day. We'll have um additional information for you all at the April eleventh meeting and that the agenda of that meeting will be more focused on the community forum and workshop, the sort of materials that will be covered in them, so the committee is not surprised by how that meeting will go. And uh, the uh exercises, which will be a part of that meeting as well. And a a part of that meeting, not um in a similar timeframe and in a similar purpose will be a a separate activity, which will be a community-wide online survey, which will help to supplement the people we can reach in the meeting and get us some additional information and feedback from the community. So we'll um be launching that survey in that first meeting uh with the community, hopefully on April twenty-fifth. And that will then be running for about a month or so afterwards. Here's the the next uh six to eight months or so um laid out for you. So we're in this phase, we're really kind of at a a threshold at this moment where we're establishing the foundation. The foundation is getting pretty well set, uh, and we're moving on to identifying existing patterns uh and working with the community to do so. We're working toward the next task, which is community visioning and really starting to uh open this process up in a more public manner. Um, we'll be, as Andrea mentioned, endeavoring to meet with the committee about once a month. We'll probably end up taking some of those summer months off as a committee, which will allow us to do some work in terms of wrapping up a draft vision statement and getting that that uh formulated and then moving toward uh setting this up for the drafting of goals from there. Um, that will set us up for a a nice launch of the second phase of this work, which is really going to, I think, coincide nicely with the fall calendar, so that we would be coming back to the community for another series of workshops around drafting goals uh in the beginning of September. As as I think Gloria also mentioned, we would, in addition to the large community workshop, which is townwide in April, be thinking about a second set of more focused, smaller group meetings in the month of May, so maybe towards the end of May or so. Um, avoiding Memorial Day weekend, of course. Uh, so that's, that's the rough arc of where this is all headed. Hopefully that gives you a feel of what's what's um on deck and headed your way. But we're we're very excited to work with you all and excited to have kicked this process off officially with the steering committee. Um, and from all indications and all all discussions we've had so far, it's going to be very exciting and fruitful process. Thanks, Josh. Any additional questions or comments?
I appreciate the time today. I'm really excited to uh really kick this off and move forward and I just want to thank you, everyone at M F U C for each time putting into this as well as our uh committee members. Um, Betsy, I just want to confirm, we are good for the seven o'clock appointment uh our April eleventh meeting. We don't have any other public hearings or anything else at that time.
Uh, no, we'll, we'll uh make sure we don't schedule anything for seven o'clock.
Okay, and uh Josh, just point of order, how much time do you think we'll need?
I think it would probably be good to try to structure, if possible, about the a similar time, an hour and a half or so is is probably what we're gonna need. We we could do a little bit less if need be, like if you've got a tight agenda with other things, but give us some advance warning, we can make that work.
Perfect. Just want to double book anything at the middle of it or anything like that. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. With that, um, Rich, we can move on to two twenty-eight Dedham Street. I just do want to say as point of order, if there's anything that we have to vote on, we will be doing it by roll call vote, where I will meet each member of the planning board and then they will vote their um vote either I or nay uh in regards to the topic. So thank you, M F U C, and uh we'll move forward.
Thank you.
So the first item on your new business, as you mentioned, is two twenty-eight Dedham Street, just a request of extension. It just needs a simple vote of the board to extend the the time period for another year. And the story is they haven't started the project yet.
Oh, okay, this is the the Crowley power, right?
No, this isn't. This is um
one of those.
The uh, Brit, not ready mix, um, cement company that does a specialized.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Okay, I remember now. So I'm looking for a motion to extend site plan and special permit decision for two twenty-eight Dedham Street to three eight twenty twenty-four.
Still moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. All right, roll call vote, Gary.
I.
Eric?
Hi.
Here votes I and Melissa, your opinion?
I would vote I as well.
Thank you. All right. Can I all set there, Rich?
Yes.
All right, next one, uh, we do have the one seventeen Main Street Fire Station Project Site Plans running for endorsements. Um, if possible, tomorrow or the next day, if you can make some time with Betsy to go by Town Hall and get those signed, we'd appreciate that.
I am, uh, that's gonna be an issue for me. Just.
You're off, you're off.
Okay.
Gary, you can't walk over and help us out?
Next week, maybe, next week.
I'm looking forward to your recovery, in all honesty.
You'll see me wheeling around a wheelchair signing papers all day at some point. Don't worry.
You you need somebody to push you around. You let me know.
Okay.
All right, uh, next topic is discuss the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for twenty twenty-three annual town meeting. So we have the signed by law and the table of allowable uses. Um, we're looking to have our public hearing on this next Monday, the twenty-seventh of this month. So Rich, do you want to start with the sign by law or you want to do the table of allowable uses first?
Uh, we can. Why don't we go with signs and I'll, again, I'll do the nice thing and defer to Melissa, because Melissa and Gary had put the lion's share of work into that and just as we, as they, I'm sure they'll talk about, we did go myself. Melissa and Chad was via Zoom to the advisory board last Wednesday night, too, so I'm sure she'll can add some color on that, that meeting as well. So do you, do you need me to put the language up or is?
See if you don't mind.
Okay, hold on, I'll I'll grab it.
Melissa, you want to start with the advisory?
Yes, um, so that was my first time at advisory. Um, so I made sure that I, well, I tried to predict as many questions as I could um before I got there, because I know they're very thorough. Um. I think most of it went well. There were, there were some questions, because you know, the um sign by law um has come up before. Um, and in particular, I could kind of tell that there was a little bit of um, I don't know, leftover some kind of feeling um specifically about the municipal signage. Um, and we did tell them that we're not trying to, you know, bypass any of the requirements that any of the small businesses would go through to have um municipal signage. And basically, all we were talking about is just a digital sign, um, because technically, if we say that you can have internally illuminated signs that we thought would actually come under that category. Um, and so that one kind of held us up a little bit. Um, and rightfully so, really, they, we didn't really have a good answer about what animated means. Um, how do you define intermittent? You know, like we just kind of, we all, we all think we know what that means. Um, but uh, somebody on the advisory board said, okay, well, if you can have that sign in, say, for municipal, say it's on Town Hill, wherever it may be. Um, and it says, you know, uh, water bills are due or whatever, whatever message happens to be up there. And they were saying, well, it would be blinking or it would be animated. And I was like, well, I don't, I mean, I don't see it that way. I just think it would be a message, you know, that is up as it is in Rantham every day. I can tell you when their water bill are due. Um, and it just, you know, it just comes up and it's just a message. Uh, and then, yes, every so often it would change, but it's not flashing at you. There's nothing, you know, that is uh distracting while you're driving. Um, that would be an issue for accidents potentially or anything like that. It's just messages for people in town so they know what's going on. Um, and they thought that it wasn't necessarily that we needed to go back basically and look into the definitions of animated um of scrolling and intermittent specifically is what I have here. We need to define that. Um, and potentially update the language um that we have written. The other thing is, they mentioned that I think uh almost every one of them at some point, you know, what we had talked about is keeping the bylaw descriptive, but not necessarily as detailed. Um. As say, for example, like, you know, we, they're the business owners, if they want something internally illuminated for their sign, they would need to come to us um and ask for a special permit. And so what we had talked about doing is having that design guideline document um and outlining in there, you know, here's what we mean by cafe sign with, you know, an image. Um, and here are the size requirements for a sign like this to kind of help them along in the process so that they don't come to us with something that we know we wouldn't approve, um, but they wouldn't know that because it's not in writing. Um, and no one's told them. So we talked about having that accompanying document and I did give um Rob on advisory board, one of my um hard copies and he took it with him to review and I told him it was just a rough draft. I'll send it to you guys, too. But just something that we could give them to show them what we were thinking. Um, and it sounded like they really wanted more of the detail to be within the bylaw itself. I would say three or four of them had mentioned that um at various times throughout the meeting. Um, so I guess we could, we could chat about that, see what you guys think. We, I mean, everybody, every town bylaw um document zoning bylaws are slightly different. There's best practices, there's certain standards that I think most towns follow. Uh, at least the ones that I've seen are pretty similar. Um, the difference, I would say, is some towns are super detailed. Um, you know, and every, every possible detail that you would ever need to know, like uh Hudson is a good example of this. Um, ours aren't really like that. So, and you know, whether it's good or bad, it's just, I don't know that we want to introduce a brand new format change that doesn't really fit in our bylaws, but they did seem to think that, you know, someday Bob's going to retire and it would be best to have everything written in the bylaw to make sure that it's very clear. Um. And we did mention that we plan to have all those details in our accompanying document that we would store um on the town website. It would be with all of the other guideline documents um that Bob has on his section of the website. Um. I don't know that we actually got to, they, half of them approximately wanted more detail in the bylaw. Um, but generally, I think they were happy with what we were putting together. Aside from, you know, we need to go back and look at the definition of scrolling and they want to make sure that Dunkin' Donuts isn't able to have dancing donuts. That is a direct quote um on their signs.
That synopsis. Um, I also appreciate the want for us to be less descriptive while providing more direction in the bylaws. Um. Okay, uh, and uh, I don't feel like the this, the guy, the design guidelines, in my opinion, should not be reflected within the bylaws, because then we start building a trap for ourselves and we become way too prescriptive. Um, especially since you can't change bylaws without a town vote. And so as such, uh, you know, I'd like to reiterate the crawl, walk, run process that we're trying to issue with regards to sign bylaws. Um, I for one, I don't necessarily agree with the the need to further call out um animated or blinking or flashing, flashing or intermittent lights, except such portions of the sign. I think that is descriptive enough in my mind. I'm curious what everyone else thinks. Um, especially since this is coming to the planning board um with regards to special permit. Um, outside of that, we're not necessarily curating content or approving contents on a a rolling basis, right? I mean, we're setting basic guidelines and then it'll be up to Bob to enforce those going forward. Um. So really, I I think the the best route that we can go with is the the supporting documentation as opposed to being more descriptive in this language.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I really think we need to reiterate with the advisory board, the crawl, walk, run concept. Um, we are not experts in legal verbiage, right? We do our best for the bylaws. We can get really deep into semantics. I don't think it adds the value that what we have out there right now has. Um, it's just, you know, uh, at at, you know, at what level does the level of effort or the time that we put into switching semantics actually add value as to what we can do now, trying to get past our crawl cycle and into our walk cycle? So I'm not opposed to fixing things or filling gaps. Um, but the idea that we need to be more descriptive or that we need to really flesh out every definition. Um, that's not our goal here. This is our kind of first stab. And uh, you know, thank you, Melissa, and you know, Chad and everybody else that was at the advisory meeting. I know those are long and you have to field a lot of questions, but I'm not sure if there's a way that we can re- uh reiterate um our goals here and and you know, why the the language is structured as it is.
Hmm, there was one other thing, too. Um, two of the advisory board members were kind of I actually, I couldn't tell if they were agreeing with me or disagreeing with with me for a period of time, but then we came back around to they both were saying, why are we going to have a special permit process? Why are we going to make this more difficult for the small business owners? Um, and so I just said, you know, this is kind of talking about what you guys had just mentioned there, the crawl, walk, run, um, that we would like to have some controls and criteria around this, because it is brand new and we know that there will be pushback and that was one of the reasons we wanted to have the design guideline document to show people what we mean by, you know, what the the languages that we're writing um in the bylaws. So where the types of um types of signs and, you know, size and all of that stuff. So there were two people that said, we just need to get business in here. Um, who cares? We'll just deal with all of the standards later. And I was like, eh, um. I mean, I personally don't agree with that approach, but I understand, I understand what they're saying. I just said, you know, I don't think that would get approved if we just said what we would like to do is approve essentially a free-for-all. Um, because we know that people are little standoffish as it is about having, you know, internally illuminated signs and we would like to say that we are taking the responsibility of putting the guide of guidelines together and taking that seriously and making sure that we can kind of approve these um first uh, the first businesses to have the internally illuminated signs and kind of create these role models, um, you know, where people will kind of see that.
That, that's really important. I can only speak to myself here, but I I don't think the planning board is gonna to uh back a wholesale free-for-all attempt. That that's not what we've discussed and we've been at this for a long time. Um, and you know, Melissa, you put a ton of work in, uh, but you know, time, time-wise, we've been talking about this a long time and I don't think that's what we want.
One hundred percent. And I don't think through the approval of this in one way, shape or form, we're gonna effectively, you know, create a run on signage at any point. Um, the intent of keeping that, the keeping mechanism in place for the planning or to ensure that there is no backlash. Uh, you know, if someone does deploy something um that is against what the town's aesthetic or or feeling should be, then at least we have ownership over that decision. Um, as opposed to pointing directly to the um purchaser and installer of the sign, um, that business. Um, so you know, we're we're putting ourselves up um in front of the town uh as that authority of saying, hey, yeah, we thought this was a good idea. If you have problems with it, please discuss it with us as opposed to going after the business owner and and letting them know your opinion, because it's something that as a group, we thought was good for the, you know, direction of the town.
And then, you know, that's which is kind of um important as well, that we don't have all of that detail for V one in the bylaws, because if we do need to act swiftly and, you know, add some content in there, add some, a line that we hadn't previously thought of, we can do that without waiting. Um, you know, potentially a year or so to go back to town meeting.
Eric, you've been awfully quiet. Any opinions?
Sorry. I I don't see the advantage of prescribing everything in there and also don't see uh giving it away as a a free-for-all either.
As long as you have your sandwich board sign, you're good, right? Um, Rich, am I forgetting anything from from that meeting? I know I was trying to take notes as I went along and I know Chad did as well, but if there's anything you can think of that I'm I'm forgetting, those were the things that stood out to me.
Sure. Um, but I think a couple of years of a few members have already made the the comment in terms of the um you know, walk, uh, excuse me, call crawl, walk, run, um, which we didn't talk about in the meeting, but the 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 I did talk to Bob the next day about the animation and movement and um, you know, some of the examples that they talked about, one was, for example, the light, a light bulb itself individually will flash.
The light, a light bulb itself individually will flash. So if you drill down to that one light bulb, sure, it'll flash, but I don't think. You know, the, the overall intent would be that wouldn't be considered flashing. So it was really more of a sign itself flashing. And he thought it was actually. Pretty clear, like it, I think we would under, I think it's understandable what flashing and animated meant. But also the fact that you're gonna have the special permitting process and through that permitting process is the better place to be able to. Manage those things. So for example, they talked about the, you know, the. The menu board at Dunkin' Donuts, which is in the back of the site, which property which abuts the parking lot. You know, they would want to have one of those LCD panels now that you have with the menu. And yeah, they're gonna change. Things will change, but you can address that in the permitting process, not. Prescriptively in a bylaw, because when you start to really lay everything out prescription in the bylaw. That could have a counter negative effect on you and trying to enforce that where. You know, you get into the well, no, it doesn't change every three seconds. It changes every five seconds, so. There's a, there's a good rationale for. Certainly, obviously, the approach that you're taking right now to, to certainly crawl, walk, run. And that you would also address costs in terms of the permitting, which was a big point. In terms of right now, the special permit is seven hundred fifty dollars. We did talk about the, the board, you had previously talked about having a really a nominal fee, application fee. You know, you know, just for example, maybe it's twenty five dollars. But the ad that's required as part of the special permit goes in the newspaper, runs roughly two, two fifty, give or take somewhere in that range. So that way the cost don't start to accumulate just in the permitting process where it could be more than some of these signs potentially. So that, and the board does certainly have time to do that because you would enact that on your own. And that could be really teed up as we go forward the next month. As so when the bylaw goes to town meeting, hopefully it passes. We hear back from the AG, then you're in the position to start to entertain this special permits. And then those design guidelines, you can work on the design guidelines that Melissa's already been working on. So really kind of have it all teed up, ready to go. So. But it was, I, I came away with a favorable. Summary of the whole meeting though, that.
Yeah, I think it went pretty well overall. I had a good conversation with a couple of the guys in the parking lot after. Had a little bit more context, which wasn't necessarily about us or our presentation. I think it was nice of. David Lutz to call that out, that the issues that were presented from the advisory board were from a. Past engagement, had nothing to do with this one. So that kind of, that was nice to kind of. Set the stage for, you know, just being neutral going into the presentation, which was, I think, helpful.
I think we will need to be able to defend the, like, like Rich was getting at the. Special permit, uh, application fee and. Have an answer to that and. Make it somewhat more digestible than. Either the two numbers I heard.
What would be the all in costs with regards to the, the special permit? You mentioned running in order, running in, in the newspaper. The special permit, how much does that cost us roughly for two weeks?
See, they're in the, I think, probably in that two hundred range, two hundred fifty dollar range.
And then any other loss associated with this?
The other costs is. The mailing of the butters, notice that Betsy does as part of the special permanent process. So there is a mailing cost. But it's in regular mail, it's not.
That's nominal.
Yeah, it's nominal. So I, I think essentially in staff time, I think we're essentially. Gonna underwrite the cost, really. We're not gonna try to cost recovery on these signs. At the moment.
And does not, you have to come back and reapply for this when they wanna. Change it down the road or they want it done, you're. You wanna modify your sign, do you, you have to do this again?
I think, so to answer a couple. I think that's one of the things you will be able to handle through the permitting process in terms of. What ends up being, you might have to come back or not. So. I think we probably would want to have some. Provisions, if you will, that if they want to make a change, it could be done through administrative process, not necessarily. You know, a formal public hearing process. So for example, I, I can't think of anything right now, but just say. You might. Want to have them come back. I think we have to see how that plays out, you know.
I think we leave that alone for the time being, but with regards to the, the fees, we can always vote to, uh, let's stay from charging them as well.
Yeah, if we can build in, and I think what I was trying to get to is build in some discretion for you as the board. To make changes to a special permit, which you can do is just craft some, so if it's. You know, maybe they gotta come back, but it's not certainly go to a meeting. It's not a whole, another public hearing process.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I meant just in general, even for the first time, like I, I can think of a. A reason why we might let, you know, let's say the first ten applicants, you know. Wave the fee just to kind of get the ball rolling on this and, you know, really start. Uh, getting some new signage out and around and incentivize a, a, a quick change of the aesthetics around town. You know, something like that might be something interesting that we look to do.
Yeah, the one thing I, you know, as I'm thinking about this, we did. We did put in the projecting signs by special permit, huh? That was the.
We did protruding signs.
Well, the protruding, yes, they're the. The protruding projecting size, but they're, they are by special permit.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, because before we were talking about just doing the special permit for. Internally illuminated. Would it hurt though to have, I mean, if it's. The cost would not be that much more. I don't want to add, you know, I don't want to add. Complications and complexity to the, to the process, but I'm just wondering if it would be helpful to have that for now. So that people aren't worried, like even John was, he's like, when you see a projecting sign. And it's all the way down a building, you know, how would that look and.
I understand, yeah. That might be one of the earlier ones that might be able to be swapped out down the road, you know. By the way, Chris, I just want to let you know, if I share a screen, I can't, for some reason it disables my microphone, so.
You don't want to type?
I took typing, but I'm not that fast of a typer.
I think, does everyone have access to the document? Eric, you good?
I, I'm looking at the PDF, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, it's like the last page twenty one in the PDF. And Gary. If I thumbs up emoji or something, you can let us know that you have access to it. Be the shareholder, hopefully. I'm gonna assume we're good there.
Oh, there he is.
Forty-five seconds, sorry. I was getting my meds.
We wanted to make sure that you were good with regards to access to the document as we. We don't necessarily go through it all. Any questions on any specific areas, any additional concerns, or are we good to? You need a vote on this one separately? Rich, or do you need it together?
However you want to do it, we could do it separately or together.
And I think we'll do the sign by law first. Any additional comments around the, the sign by law as a term?
Hopefully not.
I, I've got a quick question in, were you, were you specify the zones for supplies?
Are you talking about the table?
No, the. Sign by law.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's a table on two, twenty-three. That's what I thought you were mentioning.
Uh, no, in the text of number two, internally, internally illuminated signs. C four and C six in the other table that we're talking about. We. Have a C three that isn't mentioned. Is there a reason that's supposedly not mentioned in the sign by law?
Well, to be honest with you, we only have one business in the C three, which is Camer.
I understand, we, we list out these ones, but is there a reason we don't?
No, I probably.
We should have that added. So the vote will include, as amended to includes the C three zone and section two.
I just know there's a difference.
We don't need to modify the table because in the table you're calling out C one through C six.
Table's fine, yeah.
We are really getting good at this table language consistency thing.
Why don't we change it instead of listing all of them individually, why don't you call it C one to C six? Do that in the, in the text of number two.
Then you're gonna need a bigger. Motion.
That might. I kind of like that motion. That might be a better emotion, actually, to do it.
Through C six.
And then my only other question with regards to the table. Number nine, we have projecting sign on number nine on the table. We have it in number three, but then we talk about protruding signs. And we're crossing out projecting for protruding. So I, I think we need to just. Settle on projecting or protruding and follow the route. Because I think we're using it, and Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're trying to use that word interchangeably.
Yeah, I think that we mentioned a while ago, probably a few months ago at one of our meetings that. I think there was a question about if projecting. Really was the right word. And so I think Gary went through some words and said, how about protruding and. So we changed the word to protruding. I don't know, for me, it doesn't. Make a difference. I think projecting to me makes sense, but I don't really have a strong feeling about it. I think you're right. We need to choose one or the other. But I don't have a strong opinion.
I'm going to, I'm gonna put my hat in the ring for protruding because I have that AV drag ground and when I think. Projecting signs, I'm thinking there's a light. Projecting a logo or something onto the ground or onto the side of a building. And I don't want to get to that. Level of tech just yet. In town. So I think if we can also amend the word projecting in those areas that protruding with.
The only thing I would comment, Chris, is that the. General term. From a sign standpoint is, is projecting some call, some also. Define them as blade signs too.
Blade?
Blade, yeah. So the common. Term is projecting sign. Not projecting in terms of, I know what you're referring to.
Is anybody else able to actually search this document? My PDF doesn't seem to be searchable, so it's hard to. Find all the projectings in here.
So there's bullet point three.
Yeah, it's in three.
And then fourteen, we remove it.
But you were, you did remove it there in terms of wall sign, not. Thought you were going for protruding just to describe. A wall sign, not projecting sign.
Maybe the better way of dealing with this is Melissa, with regards to the design guideline document, the addendum. Does that have a projecting sign label with a, an example of a projecting sign?
It does have an example. I don't know if I called it projecting, but whatever we decide here, I will change it in that document as well.
Maybe that's the route we go, um, because it's easier to update the, the. The design guideline as opposed to trying to amend it in all places here. I do see your point, Rich. With regards to number fourteen. Um, with the change of projecting versus protruding there, that's, it's more to the flat. Wall sign and how far it comes off of the wall. Are we in agreement on that? Are we good?
You have it in the table, number nine, the projecting word again.
Yeah, and, and the table in number nine, it coincides with the, the verbiage in number three, so I'm okay with keeping that. If we do what we said we're gonna do with the, uh, the addendum, the design guideline. Gary, you good with that?
I think I'm good with that. I'm pretty sure.
You good with that?
Yes, I think when I send it out to you guys, I'll just have you take a quick scroll through just to make sure that we're all on the same page, but yes.
Eric, what are you thinking?
That, that piece is okay.
Anything else outstanding?
Well, I thought there was gonna be a, I don't know, Rich, did you get some more guidance from? Council about the off premise signs and when we started to tackle that and if that's applicable or we can, or that shouldn't even show up here.
Yeah, I did. But actually, I didn't even need to go council. I just needed to go back to my own memory because. The signs that you're referring to with the community organizations and everything, Eric. And others, that is handled through the general sign by law provision that we have. So we've got the general bylaw. That you deal with those signs that you go to select board for, for community events and so forth. So that will stay over there. So in terms of that, 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 there won't be no change there. So we don't. It's not applicable and, you know, it's.
The last item in the table was kind of had a lot of different. Thoughts, I thought. It also talked about billboards and outdoor advertising authority and. We were kind of mixing those two together and is that still applicable or what, what does number two and the, the last item in the table really mean?
So there is two different things. There is off premise signs. And which off premise signs. Should be. And advertising devices permits with outside, outdoor advertising board. Which is the authority that, that at the state level for the highways. So, you know, like Route one A, Route. Well, one fifteen is really, it's a state number highway, but it's a town road, but really we're talking more about Route one A. So for example, if you want to put a billboard up. Which is technically off premise because it, it could be on premise, but it still will be a billboard. That's a billboard sign that's regulated through the state. Outdoor advertising agency. So the ones that you see on, we don't have a, well. We don't have any.
What about an off premise sign that's to get your, to fork kicks? Is that different than this? Is that a different kind of off premise sign or is that? That's where, where this falls.
Off premise signs is not through the advertise, not through the out, outdoor advertising authority. That would be you all in terms of the planning board.
Does, does anybody else get this or is it sound like we're? Mixing two different things here. Mixing two different things here.
Um, yeah, I think so the the, I think what we were confused about at the last meeting that Rich. Um, went back to his memory about was um. The offsite signs and we were, we were saying that we thought that that. That might be billboards and so the sign authority, um, the state sign authority, I believe Rich is saying is for highways only. And then um, so for things like the another category, if you will, would be. You know, when the Lions wants to put signs out for Christmas trees and they just have to get approval from the select board, that's still the case. And that is not the sign authority through the state, which was some confusion for us last time. Uh, and then I think there's a third bucket really, which is like, what if a small business? Like Ann's Market, cause they actually did ask um last week when I just went in there um to get a sandwich. Can they put their business signs on Tom de Placido's? Piece of land across the street. So I think there's a couple of different buckets. One is the the billboard, which is the one that we were confused about last time. We, I don't think we ever received any requests for and we wouldn't, cause I guess it would go to the state, right, through that advertising authority. Um, so we can, so I think that one moves away. And then we just have the other two, which is one is, you know, for nonprofits, churches, things like that, when they wanna have signs. Um, on town property and the other is off town property that has nothing to do with nonprofits. Does that make sense?
Okay, so I think we just need it to the business owners or property owners to figure that out as long as it's within compliance.
Right, but do all all three of those items, are they properly addressed in this one? Line of the table or is this? A big wrapper that. Is not, doesn't explain the same thing that you just explained.
So the that one, the 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 last one we're talking about, the off premise and the outdoor advertising board takes. Two thirds of the bucket, so that's. That's the off premise, the example is the four kicks, if they wanted to put or Ann's market. That's one. Piece of that. The other one, the outdoor advertising. Agency is is billboards on state highways, that's. That would be through that. They would have to go through the planning board. And also the state to put up a billboard on on the state highway. And then. The community group, I'm gonna share my screen just so you can see it. When you talked about the Lions Club, the Rotary uh community groups and so forth. That's handled through the general bylaw. Signage, which is through the um. Which is through the select board.
I'm saying, it seems like we're trying to do too much in that one. Item. I mean, maybe it's.
Yeah.
There'll be two or three lines, not one combined item.
I hear you, um.
Are you thinking about splitting them out, Eric, or?
Possibly, it's just confusing with written or now to me.
I think it's um something that, you know, comes in that. Walk bucket for us. This is a existing language. That has already existed. We don't have um. Section twenty-nine, three thirty-three, chapter ninety-three of the general laws in front of us. If we wanna bring that up and really dive into what that means and what it says further. We're welcome to, um, I think for the purposes of the exercise of trying to crawl with this. Sign by law, we're probably good to move forward. I think, you know, even if someone was trying to do this off premises thing. And they came to us for a special permit, it would beg the conversation of uh. Is this okay? Does this work with regards to um? The intent of the 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 bylaw as we've written it, and I think we would be able to. Um, facilitate a conversation between the business owner and the owner of the property. As opposed to having to go through the outdoor advertising authority. Um, because as Richard stated a few times, that outdoor advertising authority does not have governance over small local signs. It's more larger billboard type signs. Um, everything. I am okay with leaving it as is for the time being and then examining in the future, should we find that we need to amend it further.
Oh, Rich, you put you or Betsy uploaded the general bylaws. Chapter two fifty-two, so um, a flashing sign is actually already defined in here in this particular. Document, huh? Um, so it says, just so you guys don't have to go digging through the documents, a flashing sign is a sign having lights or illuminations that flash, move, rotate. Um, blink, flicker, vary in intensity or color, or use intermittent electrical pulsations. Um, the, what advisory was pushing back on was that technically. Text would be rotating, even if it's not fast, therefore it's flashing.
Right.
It's not intermittent. That's the issue, it's. Brought up, it stays static. It's brought down and replaced. So it's it's not a flicker, it's not a blinking or similar, it's a replacement.
Hey, I'll tell you, um. You guys already know my displeasure with the uh. Uh, the LED gas signs at Daleys, you know, when you're driving home at night and it's like the brightest thing that goes right into your eyeballs. I woke up at five AM before, you know, sometime before I got hurt to drive up to New Hampshire and I stopped at Dunkin Donuts. In Franklin, also, you know, one forty before I get on to one uh onto four ninety-five, those screens. I mean, I know we're trying to allow them at some point, but whoa, they are, it's it's right there, it's bright. I'm learning so much about signs, guys, I mean, this is just. And I'm paying attention.
Yeah, I guess what's good for, I mean, at least for us, is where the Dunkin Donuts are located now. For, you know, both sides of town on one A and also the one in the B one. It's facing, they're both facing parking lots. You know, so at least that's good. Um, I did notice that a lot of towns do have. Smaller towns like us have, you know, like um regulations that say you have to have your light turned off by ten PM or whenever you close that evening or something like that, so that's. An option.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps for the gas pump situation, cause I don't know that those would go off, but.
I don't think we're gonna retroactively try to police everything.
Uh, before we look for a motion on this, any other? All right, hearing done, uh, Rich, is the motion to recommend this to? For public hearing or to? A select board, how do you want this?
Just recommend the. The uh final version as. Has written, published, I guess, that's probably not the right way to say it, but. The version in front of you. Cause that's actually technically, that's what we're publishing.
The amended version with the zoning with the zone.
Went to C six, yeah.
Yeah, with the C six, so that that you'll have to make, um, you know, that'll happen at the hearing.
So looking for a motion to. Submit for public.
Yeah, for publish, publication.
For publication, the sign regulation recognized as article four. In the PDF document that Richard provided us today at our planning board meeting. Beginning on page twenty-one. Uh, with amendments to section two and three to include C one through C six. For the zoning districts. For our next uh meeting on three twenty-seven.
So more.
Do I have a second?
Second it.
Our roll call vote, Eric.
I.
Gary.
I.
Let's say your opinion.
I would vote I as well.
And the vice chair votes I. Right, thank you, so moving, go ahead, Rich.
And so when I see you all in two weeks on the twenty-seventh, just remember you'll have to just make a motion again, cause. That's not in the published version yet to see. Cause we already been. We had to publish it in order to make the already for the twenty-seventh.
Understood, and uh at that point, we'll. Be recommending it to the select board.
The the would that, would that change? Yes, yes, yeah.
Alright, so moving on, the next one is the table for allowable uses. Rich, you wanna take us through this?
Sure, so I think um. Chad did a nice introduction, kind of going through in a high level, the whole purpose and intent of it, um, the advisory board. Complimented the board in terms of all, well, everyone actually, uh, the work going into to try to. Put one table um together. Really, the bulk of the conversation was really more around. For town meeting to understand what's going on in terms of the pieces. So um, what I did put in the shared drive was. By subcategory. What, when there's a strike through, what's going on with that, you know, so whether it was merged into a different use. Or was it being changed as a guide? And that guide will um. Be a handout for town meeting. And we're gonna pub, we will post that on the website as well. Because I. You know, the sense was, well, how do I know that's there or you're not changing, you know, changing it around? And I think that that document should be pretty helpful to do that. Um, and then the. Some of the changes from the last port planning board meeting. Is there was some items that were in article two that we moved up into one. So that way, when all the uses get merged into the table. That if that passed and that was all we passed, at least we put everything together. Where we were, we would clean up the tape, you know, the the zoning district category, so we'd be down to C one, C. Four, C six, um, C three.
What happened?
Kind of fair.
Do we lose Rich?
He's there, he got quiet.
Was he trying to screen share?
Might have also lost power.
Yeah.
You're right.
Also, are you able to pick up where he left off?
Yeah, I actually ha- I didn't see, I like what he did. I like the updates that he made based on the feedback, um. They, uh, it was kind, the advisory was struggling with all the same things we were, you know, how do you? How do you make the information consumable? How do you show that what they wanted us to do was um? Do originally what we would have liked to do, but it it was a little bit unruly, which is, you know, to have. Um, all of the changes noted, you know, but then. Once you do that, now everything, just if you're crossing out everything in one whole line, now you just have all of these comments over on the side and it's really hard, especially when it's printed. To know what exactly you're looking at, because you can't just click on the comment and see where it goes. Does that make sense? Once you print it, so they were struggling with that because they wanted to see for each line item what was changing, which is understandable, so. Um, I looked through what Rich just did. I really like that it's broken out by category. Cause I think that will be really helpful and then he also added in there an explanation as to what is changing. Um, and that was probably, Rich, that's actually a really good idea now that you're back. Um, because when they were talking about the, what did they call it, a cross, oh, he's gone again, um. They were, they called it a crosswalk. They wanted to see a crosswalk, um, and so that was actually going to be really hard to do to make it still. Something that you could understand, so I like what you did, Rich, having the explanation there next to each line, is that, so that would be a handout, right, at town meeting? Okay.
Sorry, dropped off there, but yes, that would. There would be a handout.
And is that something that we would also have uh slides prepared for to walk the town through?
Yeah, we would have, we would have them on on the slides as well, so we'd have both handouts, um. And we're gonna, and we will print them in color as well, so that, you know, so. Makes it easier to to helpfully hopefully follow along, um. We did have, so sorry again, I dropped off there, I don't know what happened, but um. We did speak to town council after after the advisory board last Wednesday. So in terms of. The warrant and then structuring things together, we still, that's a second conversation, so in terms of. You know, you necessarily have to get it all perfected for the hearing, you don't necessarily need to do that, but. It's gonna pretty much follow what I think was was already laid out in terms of parts. But I wasn't quite sure, like part one, part two, part three and so forth, is really the technical way to lay that out on the warrant, but but uh. Tom Harrington, so we can take. We can work on that with uh Jay as town moderator and the select board, so. Um, to lay that, to lay that out, um. I think uh. Again, I think it it seemed to be um. Understood that, again. Chad did a really nice job. He's gonna do this at town meeting, kind of bring everybody together in terms of the hot, you know, what the whole purpose is. And uh, I think that'll be extremely helpful and these handouts, I think, will be too, so I think. You know, I'm gonna send these off to the advisory board, cause we did say we would return on the. The advisory on the twelfth, I think, or nineteenth, one of those.
One of those, I don't know that it was confirmed yet, I'll have to check with Chad.
Want to check with Chad.
For a town meeting, right?
No, no, in April, April.
Oh, in April, got it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so um, report back in terms of that, so I think. With those handouts and going through it, given to them in advance, they can kind of do their homework, so they can see that. You know, we've. Hopefully covered. Everything, um.
Their other piece of feedback too is that they really wanted to see, uh, basically, I think it was in article. Three, there was a, I don't have it up in front of me, but there was basically what you and Chad decided was that you were going to say. And then we're going to fill in the table with all of the no's, you know, so basically. And so they said, we'd really like to see that completed document, and so, you know, that's fine, we'll have it anyway. But they, that's what they were struggling with that when they were looking through, because we didn't have it with us.
Yeah, great point. We'll have as a handout, if you, if you vote for all this, this is what you get in the end, so people can see it.
Yeah, discussion around this one, Eric, go ahead.
Okay, one of the uh. The commercial use handout. Document open. Right now. Section that's got a laundry mats towards the bottom of the second page or halfway, third page, maybe. There's no explanation there that it's. Why it's crossed off or moved to different use or um, should there be something there?
Is this on the addendum that uh we're working on? Right, on the uh public hearing notice.
In the commercial use handout dot DOCX. It's the. Combining and recombining the.
Ah, yep, yep, no, good catch, so, um. Nice catch, thank you, uh. That that should be in there. I think we'll.
There's some more like that further down, outdoor commercial recreation operated for profit. Outdoor commercial recreation, uh, ready for profit, sub golf course, driving range, was like those two need. That comment of where it went or why it's gone.
Alright.
I haven't looked in other documents like this, but.
Yeah, no, for sure, so I'll have Betsy kind of second set of eyes go through it too. Before we, we'll send it back out. To make sure I got them all.
I think this is really helpful, though, Rich. I like this format. Has Chad seen it yet or has he been too sick?
I don't know if he's, I I put a. I actually only got it up there today, finished it today, so.
Oh, okay. Wait for his feedback, but yeah.
I don't know if he saw it, but.
I think this should solve the problem that they were struggling with, that they be.
I wasn't sure if I was gonna get all these done and obviously between last Wednesday, I get it, I didn't get it perfected, so uh, you know. You take a look through, you see anything, I'll uh. And like I said, I'll bet you go through it too, just as a second set of eyes.
The this uh, address is not withstanding, I think we're probably good for a motion on the. Uh, larger set of articles for the public area. Okay, so motion to move to public hearing, the article one, uh, article two. From. Our, it's only two articles, right?
Uh, three.
Three, article one, order two. Three, article one, article two, and article three. As they relate to the allowable use table. Um, to our next meeting on March twenty seventh at seven P M.
The move.
Second.
Second.
We'll call vote, Eric.
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Melissa, your opinion?
Uh, I would vote aye as well.
And the vice chair votes aye, genous.
Great work on this.
Absolutely. Really glad this finally comes to fruition.
I know, I know, it's a lot of work, but I'm glad we're moving towards town meeting, um. The, the other thing that was mentioned at advisory, just to give you guys a heads up, and I don't know that we really have much control over this, um, but. They, um, I think it was David Lutes, and I know Rob was agreeing with him. Said they'd really like us to keep more of the budgetary, um. Articles for the spring meeting and save the bylaw changes for. The following meeting every year, I guess that was what was done in, I don't know, past years, or. Someone previously preferred it that way, and they would like us to do that, because there's, there's too much content. Uh, at this particular meeting, and they'd like to avoid that in the future. I don't, I mean, there's obviously a timing issue with some of these things, I don't know that we can promise that, but they would like us to try to do that.
They noted. Alright, up next, we have uh, meeting minutes, review and approve, Eric.
I reviewed the meeting minutes for three, two, sorry, two thirteen, um. I think there was some more discussion at the end of the meeting about the. Uh, traffic study, Southwood neighborhood, I don't know if that should be included in here, or. Doesn't appear to be in here now. I don't know if we wanna pause on that, or add something to that.
Any comments on that, Rich?
I don't, but, let me see. Can't open the, here we go. Are you maybe in the interested time? You wanna just, let me take a peek and just put it on for the twenty seventh, if you want, just take it.
That's fine by me, let's sit up. You okay with that, Eric?
Yeah, no, I'd like to add that portion to it, so, so.
Okay, um, so if you don't mind, uh, providing uh, Betsy with some information for that effect. Um, might even have some timestamps associated with the uh, the recording, weren't you?
Yeah, I can go back and check the uh, video again.
I appreciate it. Alright, next item is the town planner update, Rich.
Look, so first bullet item is the housing choice, um. The consultant was, who we were hired through the technical assistance grant, Horsey, when. Uh, met with myself back, uh, was, was actually the, the last week in February. They're going to be working on some models in terms of. Looking at the density, in terms of potential districts to comply with the housing choice. Uh, we do have, one of the things I think I mentioned, but I'll just. Um, bring the point back up for. To, to your memory was that. Forty percent of the fifty acres can be outside. The half mile radius. Of the commuter rail, so we're looking at some areas on Route one A. One fifteen.
Forty percent?
What's that?
Sorry, did you say forty percent?
Forty percent, which equals twenty acres, so. Cause they're just twenty acres.
How does that, huh? I mean, that's good for us, I'm just wondering how that solves the problem that they're trying to solve, having housing close to the MBTA.
Well, you know what, it's a good question, uh, it's a fair question, I think, in part, part of the, this. This new legislation and zoning act is actually housing production too, so it's kinda. It's a, it's twofold, one is, is smart growth in terms around public transportation nodes, but also housing production itself. Um, so, they are allowing for it, um, it's not to say we will do it, but we, we, we certainly have that. Option um, available for consideration, so. Um, so, this is gonna present some scenarios to you. I wouldn't expect in terms of anything really, for you to really kind of take a dive into until maybe. May, just in terms of timeframe, so.
Okay. On that, um, recently in the news, there was a town in particular, I forget the name, uh, they've decided not to adopt this.
Middleborough.
Middleborough, okay, thank you, can you remind me again what the penalties are for not adopting this?
So the penalties are, you wouldn't um, be eligible for grants that are funded through the state, so. There's a housing choice grant, mass worse grant, so there's grants that are tied to it. I mean, you know, interesting, so in terms of, you know, the.
Their timeline for ineligible, or is it just a blanket?
Yeah, so, I mean, they, you know, they're entitled, obviously, do what they want, it's their own community, but, you know, in terms of right now. All you need to, and I say all you need to do, and I don't think it's a big effort, is just to say, hey, we're gonna look at these issues. Um, which, the. You know, Middleburn, four of the towns said no, um, and so they've, they've essentially taken themselves that eligibility for grants. Which is really a freebie from the state, honestly, so they look at this, and then. You know, whether the town at the end adopts it, that's up to the town Norfolk and all the other towns, so it's kinda. I don't know, I thought, I thought it was kind of short sighted this in terms of their part, so, but having said that. Uh, the attorney general's office is preparing uh, guidance documents for towns that, um. Choose the pathway of just trying to ignore or not even take. Any effort towards it, in terms of what the consequences might be, so. Uh, you know. Not, I would say not the, uh, and what I would say to you is that our action plan, this is, you're doing this. We're gonna do some assessment analysis, and then. Not till December of twenty twenty four, will we then, if we don't do anything, will we then be ineligible? So because.
So we've, we've got a runway.
You have a runway, yes, exactly, so.
Alright, that's fine. I, I am curious, though, as to what uh, that document ends up being from uh, punitive measures. And for how long?
Well, there are some additional articles, and I'll, I think I'll put them on the shared drive for you to take a look at, there are other organizations in terms of civil rights groups and so forth, that. Um, are watching towns when it comes to.
Kind of hoping for this, makes sense.
Yeah, so, um, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about it next week at the select board's meeting on the twenty first, so. We'll have a little deeper discussion on it, but that's, um, the one thing that. Um, we meet with the consultant is, if you remember, our inclusionary bylaw. Requires too high a percentage to comply with the housing choice. Uh, legislation, well, in terms of the guidance tied to the legislation. They, they tasked one consultant to put together what. If a town wants to maintain twenty percent, well, more than ten percent. What the town would have to demonstrate that is financially feasible for housing production. Um, so I don't have that yet, nor today, so we'll see what that looks like, um, but the one comment from the consultant was. There may be a way to tier it, so basically, you know, if you have housing choice. You could tailor the inclusionary to comply, and then have a different percent. Outside of the housing choice district, so those are the things we'll kind of be talking about as we go forward, but, you know.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yep.
And it's always good to do the analysis, Rich, obviously, I just feel like. You mentioned that for Middleborough and a few others, it's kind of short sighted, I just. I, I have to agree, I mean, at some point, I mean, think about, so forty Bs, right, that, chapter forty B, I think was. What, fifty years ago, forty years ago, something like that, um, and that was to solve a problem then, which was about affordability. And then I think, I don't know this for sure, but if you look at housing choice, now suddenly it can't be age restricted, right? So I would assume that the towns like ours have said, okay, well, we'll do this forty B, but we're not gonna impact the schools, and we're gonna make it. Um, you know, fifty five plus, and that solves a problem for us. Um, and now with housing choice, it can't be, I believe, Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, it can't be age restricted, so I feel like. If you don't get ahead of it, if you don't, you know, solve the problem in the way that your town can and would like to see it built. To, you know, the best of our ability, there's always gonna be something else that comes over the top. You know, so I do feel like that was probably short sighted, it is up to the town, to your point, Rich, but, um, I think. It would be short sighted if we did that, I also don't know how much money that would. Um, what the loss would be for us, that we would have to make up for in property taxes, which I know a lot of people would not want, so. Certainly, the analysis will be good for many reasons.
One hundred percent, I, I always try to look at things from both sides of the, the point there, I'm not saying that we should. Ignore it, or, you know, not move forward with it, I'm just curious what the penalties are, and for how long we would be subject to those. If this should not pass by town vote, or because we decide to not move forward with it. I think it's just, it's an intelligent decision to make sure that we have all of the information available.
An important piece of this conversation is that it is. A district prescribing a density, but it doesn't. Mean that that's what's gonna get built out, so for example, you know, we don't, in, in the town, except for the, you know, we might. There might be a point when we have a wastewater treatment tent, plant in town center, um. But we don't have it at this point, so as we kind of plan for these things, you know, without the sewer, you're relying on septic system, so. A lot of these, the build density is not what is necessarily prescribed, you know, in the housing choice, so those are. Those are the conversations we'll get to more so as we go forward for people to, to hopefully understand a little bit more, but.
That's.
Which actually probably good segue. To the next uh, topic. So just on that point, uh, interesting enough, uh, what we. I have talked to the consultant about as it deals with housing, housing choice. Is that we more likely would wanna have sewer in the area where we wanna have true of the mixed use. Residential and commercial, cause if you recall, housing choices standalone residential, no mixed use, you could do mixed use. But you have to allow for standalone housing, so we may wanna have a. The sewer directed to where it's housing that's mixed use related, where you have to have a commercial as part of it. And so you're not necessarily aiding that, we may want to, but I'm just saying. That we may for now, like the inner core that we talked, the properties that we talked about. That may not be where housing choice goes, it may be outside of the inner core, because we wanna, that's where the sewer is right now. For example, on Liberty Lane and, and uh. And, well, a meeting house too. So that doesn't give you a complete answer on the wastewater study, but, so. I'll be before the conservation commission Thursday night, we had to file a notice of intent. In order to put in additional monitoring wells within the wetlands behind. Well, on the, on the conservation property behind the Freeman Kennedy Athletic Field. As well as we'll be putting a monitoring well in the stream that's running behind there to measure the groundwater. To see, we need to, the next step is to model the groundwater level, see where. If we introduce more water into the ground, where it will go. And so that, we need to file a notice of intent to do that, so it'll be before the commission Thursday night. Um, the hydrogeologists go out, um, hopefully we get that permit from the conservation commission. And do the monitoring between now through May. And then we'll have, then we'll have, be in a better position to see what potential size system. We may be able to do for a wastewater treatment plant.
How does this all tie into um, the Freeman Kennedy uh, proposed renovations and their plans, um, are they on septic currently? Or are they on the top, sure?
Yeah.
They're on septic, so, in order to increase the number of classrooms, they're gonna have to add to their current system.
Yeah, um, we haven't, we haven't merged the two at this point, but, um. It's a conversation worth having, as you know, I mean.
It also presents an opportunity, because we were thinking that we were gonna lose our, uh, our treatment plant location, uh, due to the fire. Apartment plans, um, and it not necessarily being the best location for it. Um, so I think, you know, looking at those plans and, and what they're thinking, it might be an opportunity for us, especially if they're already. Have shovels in the ground. And probably a similar timeline as well.
I would agree, and I do need to move that conversation. I'll report back, I think, uh, I think you already know, um, there was flyers out there having a meeting at next Tuesday. Evening?
Twenty first, right?
Yeah.
And it did not seem like there was any Zoom component to that, so, um, in person.
Yes, I think that's, yeah, I didn't see any Zoom.
Isn't there another meeting about this, oh, I think it's school feasibility?
That's what we're talking about, the twenty first.
That's the twenty first, I thought, for some reason in my mind, it was the sixteenth. But I, I could be confusing that with something, I'll double check.
In two days, in a way.
So you did get an email blast in terms of there is a PIP meeting on the sixteenth, at six P M?
Oh, okay, yeah, no, you're right, I'm confusing those two.
That's alright.
Yeah, so, seven P M, on the Freedom Kennedy Expansion Meeting in the Freeman Kennedy Library.
Yes. And then the next bullet item is Southwood Hospital, I know Josh had, has been working on. The development scenarios and the modeling, and he's. He's a couple weeks away, probably two or three weeks away from being able to get out the draft, just to take a look at it. But we're not on a, we're not on a fast track, so we'll have to, you know, we'll have to. Figure out when would be appropriate time to have a meeting on that topic, all the different.
Is this a planning board meeting, or is it more public?
It would be pub, you know, a larger public meeting, yeah.
Sponsored by the planning board?
Yeah, I think we probably would do like a. Probably two, twofold, one, I'd probably do a, a touch in with the planning board, and then, and then schedule a broader public meeting to push it out.
Makes sense. Um, any information you can give us about the upcoming meeting on the sixteenth?
Not really, no, I'm just gonna be a participant myself.
I'm very curious, I saw, I opened the uh, report, I believe it was three hundred and fifty four pages. So I hope, I hope there's a summary slide somewhere.
With notes version?
Yeah.
Yeah, me too, it was kind of challenging going through, I was trying to look at the wells where they, you know, where they did the testing and then the location and. Yeah. We'll see.
Well, okay, um, any other updates, Rich?
No, it's different tonight.
Any unanticipated new business? Alright, here and then, we have our next meeting scheduled for Monday, three twenty seven. Uh, we've got the public hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for the twenty twenty three, and the town meeting, and we will revisit our meeting minutes. From the February thirteenth meeting, with that, I would love a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you, Eric.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, in a minute, thank you all.
Thank you, get some rest, Gary.
Hi, Gary, good to see you.
Good to see everybody.
Take care, you need anything, let us know.
Will do.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Goodnight.